Are we going to move?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're not good.
Well. We typically don't. Go ahead. We can talk about it in a minute. Yeah, okay. Well, welcome. We have a crowded house tonight. Do, notice, um, excuse me. Special meeting for the Scioto Township Board of Trustees. Five thirty PM, August twenty-sixth. We have called a special meeting to consult with the township attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Innovent Group LLC versus Scioto Township. I'm going to close the door. I don't think she needs to. Should I, uh, let's see. Either find the rest or do you want to talk?
We have to find a new closed session.
Yeah. Man, you're paid.
We have members of the public.
Okay, well, we need to adapt this.
Um, you can verbally propose an agenda. If you want.
Well, yes, okay, so roll call.
Carrie?
Present.
Yapo?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brandt?
Here.
Noel?
You.
Reed?
Here.
Brizer, absent. We have Quorum. Also present is Township Attorney Maria Fink.
Public comment. This is the time for the public to speak. If you have anything in front of the board of trustees that you would like to say.
We have a couple of members on Zoom. Would you like to raise your, anybody on Zoom want to speak?
Hey.
No.
Hang on.
Okay. Is there a motion? To, you do this.
I can make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, I'd like to, um, make a motion to move into closed session to consult with our township attorney regarding the trial or settlement strategy in connection with the Innovent Group LLC versus Scioto Township, because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the township as permitted under MCL fifteen point two six eight subsection one E.
Support.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Six zero, motion passes. We are now entering closed session at five thirty-two PM. I suggest, as is our practice, that we move to the small conference room and come back to this space for open session.
I kind of do. I would deny, I would deny. It'll be stuff here, but I wasn't.
Okay, we are ungetted.
I move we come out of closed session.
Okay, um, did you get that?
Motion by Reed, support by Riser.
Yep, um, what time is it? It's six forty-eight. All in favor say aye. Oppose? None? Motion passes. What, there's five? Five zero?
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor say aye. Adjourn at six forty-nine.
Excellent, thank you.
We'll be back at seven.
That's, yep. Well, we have two people that are in the other room. So how do... Well, we have two people that are in the other room. So how do...
We didn't say. Okay, bring this meeting to order at seven oh one. Seven, oh, it's seven o'clock still. Okay, thank you. Clerk Flintoff, could you call the roll, please?
Carrie.
Present.
Yable.
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brandt.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Riser.
Present.
All here. Also present is Office Coordinator Kristi Aiken and Township Attorney Mariah Thinks.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under the Constitution of Justice.
Now it's time for the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes proposed?
I have, sorry. One proposed addition I'd like to add as J three, approval of the special meeting minutes of August nineteenth. I emailed those out yesterday to the board as they were just ready.
And I would like to move L two, the quarterly investment report for Q three into consent agenda and thank our treasurer for the stellar job in getting those out early and the format very digestible. So I'd like to put them in consent if there's support for that.
Sure. Okay. Like we did from eight nineteen, you said, minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and I have actually two things. I would like to table N two, the solid waste for, with the Ann Arbor Township Model Preferred Holler. We had some more information that came in today and I would propose that we call a special meeting for that or maybe a combined special meeting at another time after Labor Day. Oh, and one other thing, under, under consent agenda, we go. Oh, for the Planning Commission reappointment, that is for Bob Walsh and Barb Kalijar, our deputy clerk, had brought to my attention that his appointment to the ZBA, and I assume that the Planning Commission, everybody would support him for the ZBA, that we reappoint him for that, the same term.
Yes, and, and that that revised model motion would be incorporated to the consent agenda.
Yes.
I clarified.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, other than do we need a minute to make sure our AVs is up and running? Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as, amended agenda as proposed?
I would so move.
Support.
And that was trustee Noel, support? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, correspond, let's see, where are we? Declaration of conflict? None? Okay. Correspondences are, have been concluded. Thank you. Now is the time for a public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. We begin with anyone present. So if you do have a public comment, please come up to the table there.
Your president. At least two hundred and eleven pages were added to the agenda packet between last Wednesday and tonight. This has to be the fifteenth or twentieth time I've asked this board to stop adding to the agenda packet once it has been published, except in extreme circumstances. I once again ask this board to stop adding to the agenda packet once it has been published. Yes, you complained, you complained at the last board meeting that people don't read the agenda. Then you make this agenda three hundred pages and add another two hundred pages, so now it's at five hundred. That rather defeats your request to have people read the agenda packet in your frustration when they don't. Yesterday, the loss support had a special meeting about a sewage backup in Los that resulted in the community sewage flowing through a resident's home. It could happen to one home in Los, it could happen to any of them. The next admin meeting, relasal will happen October sixth. That means it will be five months since the event happened before the family can expect any response. Yesterday's only response was that the investigation was ongoing. This after the family was told to wait ninety days for the results of the investigation. Well, now we're twenty-one days past the ninety days and the response is still, you have to wait. There are three of you on this board who are also on the loss support. Imagine if this was your home. Imagine if you were living with a stench of sewage for months. Imagine if you spent tens of thousands of dollars to repair and replace components of your home after this disaster. Imagine if you asked the utility for help, the only response you ever got was, you'll have to wait. I submit that kind of response from a community utility is totally unacceptable and the behavior of the loss of board is improper and unethical. You have lots of time to discuss and hammer to death the issue of the articles of incorporation. I suggest you make the sewer emergency a higher priority than the articles of incorporation. The KFC property is back on the agenda tonight. I once again remind this board that shoehorning forty-seven units onto a tiny section of this property is a bad idea. If the water supply request is denied, then the community well will likely draw in the dioxane that is present right next door on Elizabeth Drive. Note that the utilities director recommends denying that water supply request. Another community wastewater treatment plant is another bad idea. Interjecting traffic onto the Dexterian Harbor Road in that blind section of curves and hills is a bad idea. Remember that this is the exact area where a resident got killed just getting his mail last year. Please reject the KFC project. I think it was bad enough this board spent so much energy on sabotaging the supervisor since January sixth instead of doing the work residents voted you in to do. Now it's taken a turn for the worse. It seems to me there is a, there is a new trend in the last couple of months towards members of this board being intentionally deceptive and dishonest. The issue of whether the DDA had completed its purpose or not is irrelevant. The way he went about dissolving it and being intentionally deceptive and dishonest to do it is the issue. At no point in the document sent to the DDA requesting the return of four millages does it say that any response other than yes, sir, will be considered a rejection. Kathleen was in front of the DDA twice and never made that clear. David was in front of the DDA three times and never made that clear. Mariah never made it clear to Ryan Sweeney in their extremely brief conversation. No one ever made it clear that responding with a suggested paragraph and modifying some whereas statements would be considered a rejection. The proof that it was never made clear to the DDA is that none of the DDA members mentioned it at the August twelfth board meeting. They thought, all thought it was still possible to work with the board to resolve the issues. I was sitting near them and it was clear they were surprised at just how wrong they were. If you're going to be hardliners, then own it. Say what you mean. At the July eighth board meeting, say that you're going to dissolve the DDA and there's nothing they can do about it. Own it. Don't cover your real intentions with deceptive actions and words. We had four years of that. We don't need four more. There is one benefit your deception and dishonesty bought you. When the DDA, DDA met for the last time last week, they talked about suing the township. It was decided not to because they only had one day to do so. So in those terms, your fifteenth dirty trick worked perfectly. As Jeff Harshy made clear during the last DDA meeting, the only reason the DDA captured two million dollars a year is because it was in place for thirty-eight years. The TIF capture is only, is only the difference between first year's taxes and this year's taxes. If you restart the DDA, it will take decades for that data to be.
Okay, your five minutes is up, please.
In substantial TIF captures, I'll fiction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Anyone else present?
Hi, about high seat, five five Wood Grove. And I'm here with a simple message. I spoke before about this parcel in Ann Arbor Grove and all that. And I just wanted to express my ongoing appreciation and gratitude for this board and its efforts on, on behalf of the citizens. Parkwood and I, and as I see the support we actually gathered townshipwide against this project. And, you know, obviously there was a vote last September and the interview group that purchased the property, perhaps assuming erroneously, I believe the possession is nine tenths of the law. I have to believe the law is the law. And I also have to believe, I think I know who is responsible for having a vision of this township and executing that vision consistent with the values of the citizens of the township. I appreciate what you've done. I appreciate you acting in a small D democratic fashion on our behalf. So I know, I know I speak for rest of the group. I'm sure Alan would have been here if he, if he could. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Thanks, Bob.
Kevin Jackson, Reverend of Parkwood Condos. I'm gonna second what my neighbor said. I appreciate what the board has done on that parcel. We are not against development of that piece of the property. We just want it to be in the character of the current, the current neighborhoods. It doesn't need to be forty-two units. It doesn't need to be thirty-six units. I don't know what the number is, but it doesn't need to be that number for that small piece of property. I know it fired being an elected official. You can never please everybody. You probably only, I'm only joking here, you probably never please anybody. If, if, if you, if you please this person, then this person is upset. If you please that person, then the other person. So just, just do your, your due diligence like you've been doing. Make your decisions for the betterment of Syo Township and let us all live in peace and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm also a neighbor at Parkwood Condos. And I also want to thank you all. I realize it's with quite a bit of risk that you all have stood by us. And I really feel that Syo is a community that values the nature. We have trees there that have been there forever that protect us from global war, I mean, their climate change. Where there's also the issue of the water, as you know, and the flooding. We're in a flood plain. So I just want to congratulate you for the work you have done and to express my appreciation and hope that we can continue to at least keep the area as green as it is and as free as possible from flooding and not turn this into a concrete jungle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Helene.
Anyone else present?
Good evening. My name's Gretchen Driscoll and I was recently elected as the Water Resources Commissioner for Washtenaw County. You have been working with Theo Eggermont on solid waste issues and recycling. So by the way, thank you for letting us use this drive while that crazy drive is going on. As you may be aware, he's on paternity leave till October and I've dropped by with Jessica and sent an email to the supervisor, Jessica, the clerk, sorry, about some of the work that we can do in our capacity in our department. We do have a responsibility countywide for the solid waste management plan, which is a state managed plan. That's a, we are working through and we're working with RRS, which is what I enclosed in the email. And most recently, we have contracted with them to help develop model ordinances for township, single hauler ordinance. And also we helped Dexter County, meaning the county facilitated a contract with RRS to help Dexter Township with the single hauler ordinance and also an RFP. I live in Dexter Township now and happened to be on the board last year when all this process went through. So I'm very familiar with it. I'm gonna leave my business card over here for anybody that has any questions. But I, I guess I know you've been having this conversation this summer. I have been watching your meetings. I have talked with Theo before he went on paternity leave and I see that you're coming close to trying to move forward with this. So that's why I was here today to give you a sample of the Dexter Township ordinance. I also spoke with Karen Knowlty. Some, some of you may know her. She's a trustee and she was responsible for the, working through the ordinance, the community engagement and the whole process. I spoke with her this morning. She's happy to speak with anybody that might have any questions. But the ordinance that I attached today is an ordinance that requires the hauler to do the building billing. I had heard some frustration here about having all this responsibility as a township. And it seems to me that the hauler could be doing the billing and taking complaints and if they don't get resolved sufficiently, then they could come to you. So that's what Dexter Township is doing and we haven't actually finalized the, the contract with Waste Management. I think they're fine tuning it, but we should be moving in that direction here pretty shortly. So I just want to let you know that we not only can help facilitate it, we can help fund it, which is always good news for township government or any government. And so feel free to give me a call later or shoot me an email and hopefully we can help you get this challenge resolved for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present? Nope. Okay, Christine, anybody? Okay, the first off will be Pat Stein. Go ahead, Pat. She that?
Oh, my apologies. Are you still there?
Yeah, we're here. Go ahead.
I was muted on this end. Forgive me. I would like to address my comments to this board. I want to thank you for the work you are doing as our elected officials. Thank you for the hard decisions you have been making for the benefit of all the residents of Syo Township. You and all your hard work is greatly appreciated. Thank you and enjoy your holiday weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. There are no phones on here. Go ahead, Alan.
Hello, Alan Verbano, Low Density Parkwood. I would just like to briefly echo my colleagues from Parkwood and basically thank the, the Board of Trustees for their due diligence on our issue. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
Anyone else would like to speak at public comment? There are no hands raised. Okay, well, thank you. Board response?
I would make a comment. There was a comment from the public that the clerk is responsible for the agenda and the contents. That's not true. Our off, we, the board assigned that duty to our office coordinator, just to make the record clear. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not this way? No? Let's move on to approval of the minute. Move on to approval of the minutes, J one, approval of minutes of the August twelve, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Are there any proposed changes? No, was there a motion to approve the August twelfth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes? I'll move it.
I support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passed with seven zero. Approval of the minutes of the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Any proposed changes?
I move the approval of the August thirteenth special meeting minutes.
Support.
Motion by Riser, support by Yable.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None. Motion passes seven zero. And lastly. And lastly, approval of the minutes of August 19 special meeting. Any proposed changes?
The right time, I move their approval.
Any support?
The board.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Or minutes are adopted. That was Z. Okay, actually consent agenda. So we had moved L2 quarterly investment report for order three to consent agenda. And then we have included for planning commission reappointment, but also provide Walsh to the CBA. Do we need to have a special motion for that?
With the board's consensus, if I could just have a copy of that?
I would move the consent agenda as we might it earlier.
Ask the board.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? None. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, regular reports. Let's start with L1, reports from Supervisor, Treasurer, Clerk, Office Coordinator, Departments and Committees.
I have a correction to my report from, I think with the LPC. His name is Norm Roller, not Noe Roller. The typo, N O R M, not N O E M. Thank you.
Any other reports?
Just quickly, I would share that trustee Noel had asked me about the legal review of the insurance coverage. I had received word back from the attorney that he expects that to be ready on November the third.
November?
Correct. That's the day he provided me last week.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question of David about the LPC report?
I'm sorry, it was a parks report.
I'm sorry, parks report.
My mistake.
Well, on page two of the parks report, you mentioned that there was PPP interest in having the site property be named, renamed the, well, it doesn't really have a name yet. The Five Oaks Preserve based on the five different species of oak trees on the site. Is that something that they took action on or they're wanting us to do that?
It was my understanding that we would be getting a motion, but it hasn't made it here yet. But so, yeah, we would, I believe the park was going to put through a motion to have the board name that parks as the Five Oaks or the Five, yeah, the Five Oaks Preserve. And then in the process also, part of that, we can discuss how we come up with names.
Okay.
I think that's important and then how we memorialize those names.
Well, I kind of described it here, but.
And Supervisor Carrie, since we're on the topic of the Parks Committee recap, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Sure.
Trustee Reed, you have from Director Harrington's update under E, the use of the tool cat being restricted just to Marshall Park. That, the meeting was on the 13th of August and on August 12, Treasurer Yable and myself and Director Harrington sat down and had a meeting together to discuss where the tool cat would be allowed to be driven as opposed to Z to Liberty. And I just want to clarify that during that discussion, the tool cat would be allowed to go to Van Curler using the pathway Z Road with a vehicle behind it to keep it a little bit safer, given the fact that when it has its implements, it goes nine miles per hour. It would also be able to go to Sloan Preserve from the pathway Marshall down Baker as well as the Marshall Park. So I just wanted to clarify that that was not, it was, was not just limited to Marshall Park.
Two points, I think I probably misunderstood what Murphy said, and I should have corrected my minutes before I sent them. But I also have an issue with us with the restriction of that use of that vehicle. That vehicle is no different than a farm tractor. And I've had to follow the Wings tractor several times going five miles an hour with no truck behind it protecting it. And he's got his, he sometimes has his flashers on. He's got the triangle. And the tool cat has flashers, has turn signals, has a triangle, has a stroke and has a truck following it. So I don't see the need to limit that to driving on the pass and driving, you know, only to certain parts. I mean, I think it should have the same ability to drive on the road, just like any farm tractor. It's a street legal vehicle and I don't see the need for us to restrict it.
Understood. And, and once we get the trailer, then the intent is to trailer it to these locations because of the fact that it does go so slow and spending that time at nine miles per hour to get to these locations will speed up.
But it's not a safety issue, it's a time issue?
It's all safety.
Okay.
For me.
Less safe than a farm tractor because actually it's going faster than a farm tractor.
Difference of opinion. Thank you.
Suggestion, I just want to note, this is the first time the township has ever had such a vehicle. And so I think it's natural that we're kind of coming up with, with policies. I might suggest that maybe David and Christie could sit down offline and kind of come up with, because I mean, this is just about staff safety and also staff efficiency. I think it's about both, but I understood the concern to be mostly about staff safety, which I know we all hold paramount. Yeah, just a brief update. Moving forward with preparations for the November 5th special election WISD. Also, I want to thank trustee Brandt and Treasurer Yable. We've now had three meetings of the BSNA working group, and I want to thank everybody for their thoughtful conversations. We're exploring going from BSNA net to BSNA online. And I want to thank the Government Finance Officers Association. They have a ERP specialist who joined us at the last meeting. I thought that was helpful. So hopefully we'll maybe have two more meetings and then be able to have a substantive report back to the board.
All right, I can do a planning commission report?
Sure.
The significant thing from planning is the proposal for SIO Township Fire Station Number Two came before the Planning Commission for a public hearing and possible action to approve the conditional use. Thank you, Chief Hood. That's, that's what was important. It's significant because they were bumped off a schedule a month ago based on quorum issues. And the chief is diligently working on initiating this project to be within the new timelines imposed by the federal government for energy rebates.
Thank you.
Sure, one more update about that. I did have a meeting today with the State's Technical Assistance Center about the energy rebates that are available for both the vehicle, we purchased the electric vehicle earlier this year, as well as geothermal field, and we're making some good headway in getting those prepared and ready for cemental. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Under reports, L3, presentation by John Horford of GCSI. John, would you come up please? Trustee Noel, this is.
I can introduce him.
Your invitation.
Yes, thank you. So we invited John to speak and he's going to address some of the concerns that were expressed by board members recently regarding GCSI fees. And also I've asked him to give us an overview of his accomplishments, what he has accomplished and the GCSI accomplishments before John took over. So welcome, John, and cheers.
Yeah, thank you for having me. First, I just wanted to recognize, obviously it's very difficult times on the federal level, on the state level. There are lots of difficult financial decisions that municipalities, businesses are having to make because of different types of cuts. And we absolutely recognize that. And you guys, this, it's a public account, taxpayer dollars. You guys have to be good stewards of the public's money. Can you speak up, please? Yes, sir. So you have to be good stewards of. All right, that is better. So obviously as a public account, with taxpayer dollars, you guys have to be good stewards of the public's money. And as I had said initially, these are difficult times for lots of people because of cuts that are happening at the federal and state level. With that being said, you know, GCSI would love to continue our relationship. And we believe that it has been a very fruitful relationship. I've only been the head of this account for just over a year. But in my time here, we've been able to secure the $750,000, which, when you look at it compared to the amount that's paid annually, which is just under $40,000, that's a pretty good return on investment. In addition to that, it's easy to look at the dollar amounts and just make that comparison. I would argue that the relationships that are built are even more important. Going forward, having relationships, for example, when we had the Leo Chair come in last year, Will Snyder, someone who's going to be in the legislature for another, you know, six years. Angela, we're former appropriations chair, who's going to be a member of leadership, you know, if the House is able to take back, Democrats are able to take back the House. These are people that now have relationships and knowledge of SIO and advocated for our line item in the budget last year. And these are people that, you know, they don't have people who vote for them from this area, but they have a connection and a tie to this area because of the time spent here and for them going and advocating for that $750,000 in the budget. In addition to that, just making sure that we're spending time with the people who are in those positions of leadership, which is something that we've done. We always have conversations with the appropriations chair. It doesn't matter which party they're from, even the appropriations chairs this year in the Senate. You know, Sarah Anthony and then the House Appropriations Chair as well. It, it's one of the benefits of working with a firm like GCSI and just being able to utilize those types of relationships. And then our other client relationships, obviously locally, just having the county having entities like Spark, the CBB, Washtenaw Community College and finding ways to, you know, leverage those relationships. The, the leveraging of the relationships that we have is something that is obviously cap, we're capable of doing. As of right now, our mission as a firm has been to get the rest of the money for the fire truck. If the board has other directives for us, we are more than happy to take those on, to have those discussions, to come up with a plan for those. But as of right now, that, that has been the only directive that we have and the communication is, is pretty constant. To do at least a weekly call and it could be a weekly meeting. It could be monthly meetings. It could be, you know, whatever you guys would like it to be to make it feel that you guys are genuinely getting your money's worth. As Kathy had mentioned, I looked up a couple of the wins that we've gotten before I was on this account. But when Kirk Profit had this account in the last several years, 1.1, 1.5 million dollars for infrastructure improvements on North Z and I-94 for better and safer pedestrian movements in that area and to provide the continued connection to the border, border trail as it goes through SIO. And then 1.7 million for an additional pathway slash road improvements for the Z Road Phase Five and Park Road portions. So between that 1.5, 1.7, 750,000, all within the last, you know, three or four years, obviously with the help of Donald Zinsky, who was the minority leader at the time. You know, I, I feel like there's been a significant amount of, of wins that may seem common sometimes to certain individuals, but these are not wins that every township gets by any means or anyone gets in the budget. These are things that have to be, to be fought for. There are things that the, the legislature has to feel are worthy. And, you know, fortunately, you guys have done a great job of presenting your case and putting together teams that are able to tell that story in a way that has been beneficial to the township clearly. And GCSI is an extension of that and just making sure that it's heard and reiterated. And, you know, we remind them of that and we continue to make sure it stays top of mind for the members of the legislature. I have an answer.
Yeah, I think there are going to be some board questions for you. Kathy, would you like to start with a question?
I don't have a question because I am, okay, we're also going to have discussion. I didn't want to go into the discussion yet, but I am supportive of maintaining our relationship with GCSI. But others on the board had major questions, so maybe you should go down the table. I don't know.
Okay, we'll start with trustee Reed then.
Up until a week or so ago, I was on the fence about this, but then I started realizing that GCSI can only do what we ask them to do. And I'm not sure we've been open with them and giving them the proper direction that we need them or what they, what we want, what we would like them to do, whether or not they can do it or not, but where we would need help financially. So I would be in favor of continuing the relationship. Oh, I think what we need to do is form a, a group to put together a list, obviously with board approval, to give them to start being on the lookout for where they might find some assistance for us. And I would volunteer to be on that committee.
Oh, good. Okay. And I will add, I would be willing to be on the committee too. I think we need three board members. Trustee Brandt, do you have questions?
Yes, I have. Good evening, John. I've had concerns about your business model. I've expressed it at the last meeting. It's an unusual model that I'm personally not used to. So this retainer model that we pay you a certain amount of money and you go after things that we request. So I might suggest a modification to that, that I'm used to consultants that provide advice. Your ear is to the ground, so to say, and you should see avenues available for certain types of funding. And I would personally like to see a more proactive approach where you reach out to us and say, hey, I think there's an opportunity for something. We are just reading that the budget was just passed this afternoon. Many of us, some of us on this board are concerned about we're paying for a service for dollars that do not exist. That funding has been, has been and continues to be constrained at the state and the federal level. And so is that a responsible position for us managing taxpayer dollars? Now, if you could give us, I don't want to call it the inside track, but you, you deal with these legislators that are on appropriations or that are submitting requests. If you see something that looks viable, give us advice. I would like to see more advice coming from you to us. Thank you.
Treasurer Yable?
Sure. Thanks, John, for coming tonight. I know originally I was the one that spearheaded some of this conversation. I appreciate all the GS, GCSI has done for SIO over the last, you know, number of years that various people have been assigned to the account. I know you're relatively new, as you said, about a year. I appreciate, you know, the hard work that you've done. I think there's a lot more we can do just, just from a public policy. We haven't given a ton of direction to you, admittedly, and that's our, our fault to bear. And really, I, I look forward to, you know, seeing a committee that could work with our capital improvement plan. We have some really good ideas of different projects we need to do. I think focusing on that, number one. And, and then maybe looking at other opportunities that we. And and then maybe looking at other opportunities that we, uh, that we have in the township or that are more opportunity based, as Trustee Brand said, um. Yeah, that's that's my biggest thing is I just think we need some more direction. And and if we have a committee of the board that's willing to do that, I'm willing to give it, uh, some more support and give it, give it some more time to try. Thanks.
No, thank you.
John, um, thank you for, uh, coming again. Um, it's always nice to see you. So I do have some questions. Um, uh, Trustee Brand had said that the the budget was passed. That was only for the House.
Correct, it was the, yes, the the House's version of their budget, so it still needs to be negotiated, uh, with the Senate and with the Governor's Office. So it it is not the final version of the budget.
It's not the final, yeah, that was just earlier. Yeah, um, and I I do agree. I think that GCSI has provided a lot of, um, good opportunities for us through knowledge and whatnot. I mean, this is a lot of money that we wouldn't, we could possibly could have had, um, provided for ourselves, but I don't think so because, you know, we're always busy and short-staffed. So, so, um, this has done a a lot of good for us and I I I agree that GCSI does need direction and I also agree that GCSI should be giving us advice like, look, oh, this is something that would be good for you, but you have to know what our township's needs are in order to do that, because if you come back with something that is totally off the wall, that doesn't fit for us, then it doesn't, you know, it's just a waste of time and money. So I I am in support of of this, um, continuing. Now, I do have concerns though, because if we're having issues at the top um, regarding, okay, we, the the House has just passed their budget, however, it has to go to the Senate. The Senate could say no. Then we could have, um, you know, we could just not have a budget and the government shut down, then what happens? What what would, could you do for us if that happens? And of course, we don't know how long it would be if it does happen. But what could GCSI do in in a case like that?
In in that case, I would say just navigating the uncertainty and helping to provide clarity on what potential next steps could be in terms of, you know, grants, for example, that could be utilized, um. I had a meeting yesterday, for example, with the Senate Leo Chair, Mary Havanock. And she was just talking about potential grant opportunities outside of the budget for, uh, clients. But again, it fits within a specific scope. And to answer Trustee Brand's question, I I completely understand. Unfortunately, one of my weaknesses as a lobbyist is that I don't have experience as a traditional lobbyist in the sense that I'm not really much of a smoking mirrors person. A lot of people will just throw a bunch of things at you and just be like, look at all this, look at all this, look at all this. You see, like, we're just overwhelming you with the amount of opportunities, but a lot of it is just fluff, no substance. I prefer to have, and and I can work on, I can work on, uh, changing this as well, but I prefer to have direction in terms of we're interested in opportunities related to, for example, uh, the fire truck or, um, you know, if it's you know, you wanna go back and and take a serious look at Gelman or something of that nature, just something more specific so we can have a plan, like, and we can be more goal oriented towards that versus just throwing numerous things at you, which is the style of many, many lobbyists. And so I understand why that could be something that is appealing and there could be opportunity within that too, cuz out of the million things that are thrown, you know, maybe one or two do stick, but a lot of it probably wouldn't. But if if I could have an idea of, you know, two or three main objectives outside of the one that we're already pursuing, I I think that we could find potential pathways, obviously, uh, no guarantees on any of this stuff, but I I would say that the track record has been, you know, quite successful, you know, over the last, you know, four years, around four million dollars coming to the township or less than forty thousand a year. I I'd say that's a pretty decent return on investment.
Hey, John, thanks for being here. Thank you for your work, for your colleagues at GCSI. Um, I'm still hesitant about continuing the relationship with GCSI for the following, um, reasons. I've been on the board for six years. It's kind of like Groundhog Day. We about once or twice a year, we all say, hey, we should give GCSI more direction, more specifics. We'll form a committee. And and we we haven't. So some of it's our own lack of capacity. And so I don't believe that it's worth our expending the funds, um, when we don't know how to use the resource to the maximum. Um, one of the regular lobbying reports, um, which I know is required and, you know, may not be precise, but shows about ten percent of the fees that we pay to GCSI actually goes to the lobbying, um, activities. It's the required lobbying expenditure report that our finance manager always puts in and it just kinda underscores for me how much of our fees to GCSI is simply for the retention of GCSI, the availability of GCSI. I concur with Trustee Brand that what would be more helpful is proactive, you know, coming coming to us. And I I would say we we have given, you know, some direction on some funding priorities. A question I have is you know, what sort of legislative or regulatory advocacy? Is is that something that's in GCSI wheelhouse? When we think about Gelman or other complex issues, I do notice as a township, you know, the MTA, MML, even the Clerks Association doesn't always reflect the policy priorities at this table. And so I would be curious about if GCSI, aside from earmarks, you know, is GCSI skilled at helping townships push forward particular legislative priorities?
Yes, and actually that would be, this, I don't want this to sound bad. That would be my preference. I'd much rather work on policy than on appropriations, even though I've been fortunate to have a lot of success, uh, in the appropriations realm. Uh, so I I would much rather work on policy. So, uh, that would be something I'd be very interested in. And again, um, I I can work to be proactive in terms of bringing things that I think could be useful to the township, to you all, but it would also be helpful just to know, you know, sort of the the areas that you guys are most interested in and then just being able to keep an eye out for potential possibilities based on that list.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hello, my name is John Reiser and I supported, or I would slightly support keeping our GCSI, but, um, you know, doing our due diligence. Which Washington municipality has used GCSI? Which of our neighbors?
Yeah, uh, the county, um, uh, Ipsy City. And I believe that is it.
The township used to.
Yeah, used to. That contract was, um, canceled, I believe, in the spring.
All right, um, and are your fees based on like taxable value or number of residents or how much effort you gotta put into any given municipality? Well, what determines the fee structure?
That is really determined by, um, the the CEO, the president of the firm. Uh, I I'm not exactly sure even what they always base it on.
So, so how do we get a bang for the buck? Are, do, do we best utilize you to educate us on what legislation's coming down the pike or to advocate for something in the municipal, what solar or whatever it is, or seeking grants or earmarks?
I I mean, I, I I would say a combination of both and I would say it's also just a matter of perspective. I mean, for example, it 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 just depends on how you look at the situation. There, I mean, there are definitely clients who, um, you know, unfortunate, I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, we haven't been as successful in terms of, um, securing appropriations for but had they gotten, you know, four million dollars worth of earmarks in a four-year period for, you know, less than forty thousand dollars a year, they would probably, you know, I don't know, they might be over the moon. It just, it just depends. And I'm not saying that I have any expectation of that being the case. It's just, it's different client by client.
So how does a municipality like SIO know what pots of money, earmarks, grants, whatever you wanna call them, are available or become available? For instance, yes, we need, you know, fire support, whether it's a truck or a station. But what if we're also interested in land preservation or pathways or commercial development or affordable housing? How do we know what to ask for? Or like?
Yeah, I mean, if if you wrote that down and sent it to me as an official list, that would be, uh, and and I'm just saying, i- if I could take those something like that, something more specific to the chairs of certain committees and have those discussions. Um, they're they're always, or their staff, they're always very open to being like their potential opportunities for clients who are looking for something that
There might be a small part of money just for like a safe bus stop at Dexter and Wagner or safe crossing or I I don't know, connectivity with 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 respected tran- public transportation. So how how do we know what to ask for?
I I I guess I would just focus on what the genuine needs are and then we can make requests based on what the need is.
Could that be a, um, a specific need, like a crosswalk or area or just in general sidewalks?
It it could be either.
Okay.
It could be either technically.
This may go without saying, but I think it's important to note that we have had a five-year capital plan, you know, for each of the last couple of years, which is a pretty good list of those things.
Yeah, but there might not be pots of funds or earmarks available for that.
I agree, but it's a reflection of our priorities.
I agree.
And also what you see that are the, I guess, the the House and the Senate and the Governor's Office, what they're wanting to put money into, um, that would probably be helpful as well. Okay, well, thank you. Anything else?
I believe Andy was going to say something too, but do you have anything you wanna add, John?
I I just wanna reiterate that, you know, I'm more than happy to make myself available for phone calls, texts, um, sending up regular meetings. Sorry, sir. Thank you. Yeah, wha- wha- whatever it may be, I I genuinely want you all to feel like you're getting your money's worth with this contract.
Um, would you, I know in the past Kirk Profit came and spoke maybe three or four times a year.
Yep.
And just updated us on everything that had been going on.
Yeah, more than
You're willing to do something like that?
Happy to do that, more than happy to do that.
Would this help some of you? If we had more frequent updates for the whole group?
And and I think Kathy, if this were something you're interested in, maybe a proposed contract, cuz we currently do not have a contract. And maybe that scope of work might be considered as part of that proposed contract, like actually briefing the board or working with a designated committee or whatever the case may be.
So we did have a prior contract.
Yeah, but it's
Been expired.
Yeah, now it's a month.
Right, and it and it also, I I would just say the scope of services was not something that at least appears to have been um, thoughtfully negotiated. It's just pretty generic.
Yeah, I would also like to see the township, if we're gonna have a group, really have a group with goals and reports coming back from that group for us. One more group.
And I also just wanna confirm that you guys all, when the legislature is in, I send a a weekly report. I just wanna confirm that everyone gets that.
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well, thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Uh, thank you, Board. I was asked to come here and I'm I'm not, uh, advocating one way or the other for the project, but just to speak to my experience working with John and his firm. And, uh, seeking estate appropriations for, uh, for funding towards a ladder truck. Uh, and and as you know, we did secure seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that did, that was a lot of work John put in. Um, in fact, uh, a lot of work that he made me put in as well. Uh, former supervisor Hathaway, as well as our former manager Parker. Uh, here in Township Hall, we had at least, uh, five different meetings with, uh, state representatives, uh, and senators. Uh, we hosted them several times at the fire station and additionally, John brought us up to Lansing, uh, to meet them in their office at least once. Uh, so the three of us, uh, did meet them out in Lansing, uh, as part of the advocacy efforts. Uh, and that was, uh, obviously, uh, at the end of the day, successful, so. You know, for the board, however, the board board decides to go forward, understand the risk work that, uh, we have to put in as well.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Just making some notes for later. Oh, okay. Well, did we move?
No, we did not.
No, we did that.
Okay. Um, next is N one, under unfinished business, N one, presentation by AAAT and WAVE on bus service in SIO Township.
Come on out, guys.
Hello.
Hi there.
My name is Kenny Anderson. Sorry, I've been leaning down a little bit to get into this. My name is Kenny Anderson. I'm the team lead for service planning at the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority. I've also brought Forrest Yang, the Deputy CEO for Planning and Innovation, and he will step in. There's a couple of things that I'm not able to answer.
Sure.
So, um, I'm not sure. I had a presentation on
I can share it. I can share it on the screen. Give me one second.
If not, if people have printed copy, but, oh, that works as well.
Marie.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I said hi to Ken, but not to you. Hi, Marie, if you can introduce yourself before we start.
For sure. My name is Marie Grass. I'm the Executive Director of the WAVE Bus.
Thank you.
Well, while we're doing that, what I can do is start with an over, with an overview of bus services within the township. So the primary bus route to SIO Township is Route Thirty on the Jackson Road Corridor. The western end of that route is a Meyer on Zee Road and Jackson. And you can make connections between the Ride and WAVE bus services at that location. The route travels east on Jackson Road to Ann Arbor, where it connects to shopping on the west side of the city and into downtown area, where you can make connections to other, the Ride bus routes. Route thirty-one connects the Jackson and Wagner area to shopping on the west side of Ann Arbor and to the downtown area. Routes twenty-six and twenty-nine connect the apartments, condos and other housing in the Sio Ridge Road area to shopping in West Ann Arbor, the Pioneer High School and Michigan Stadium area and to downtown.
Ken, in the package we have, I didn't see the schedule for twenty-six and twenty-nine. Um, and then so I thought maybe we had discontinued that, so I'm happy that we didn't, but is it, go ahead.
The way that the post is currently set up is SIO provides support for Route Thirty only.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, um, let's move on to the next slide, please.
Sure.
This slide shows fixed route ridership. And as you can see, fixed route ridership increased year over year. For the SIO Township portions of routes, there was a twenty-five point six increase year over year. That compares to the system-wide average increase, which was fifteen point four percent. So the monthly fluctuations that you see on the graph, the ups and the downs, they occurred due to college and high school semesters being in and out, holidays, weather events and other factors that just you you can't always explain why a person gets on and off or does wanna use the bus. So can we do the next slide? Next set of services is called A-Ride. A-Ride is a curb-to-curb service provided in conjunction with the Americans with Disabilities Act. A-Ride service provides, or excuse me, A-Ride service picks up and drops off passengers with disabilities anywhere within three quarters of fixed route in the AAAT system. Uh, next slide. This slide shows A-Ride ridership. A-Ride ridership in SIO Township decreased eight four, eight point four percent over the last year. Of it was, for the system-wide, it held relatively flat at a zero point nine percent increase. Um, I haven't been able to take a deeper look into what those numbers actually mean, uh, but we can get back to you if you're interested in those. So I don't have a slide for this one and I apologize that I dropped that one out, but I'll just walk through a couple of initiatives that are happening right now. Walk through a couple of initiatives that are happening right now with A-Ride. Uh, beginning back on August twenty-fourth, various bus service changes were implemented to improve. Operational performance through things like routing changes and schedule and schedule and timing changes. So we're now in the process of communicating those changes on buses, at transit centers, online and through social media. Uh, ride guides with the new schedules are also out and available uh on buses and at different places throughout the community. Along with that, we just launched a media campaign focused on increasing ridership. So this campaign is going to be composed primarily of print ads, social media and billboard advertisements. Um, I apologize, that just kicked off very, very recently, so I don't have a lot of details on that, but we can get back to you on that if you're interested as well. Okay, for the last slide. This table is taken from the POSA contract, and it outlines the cost for services for the upcoming twenty-twenty-six fiscal year POSA agreement. The budgeted numbers here are calculated based on the twenty-twenty-six federal fiscal year ending on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. For the A A T A costs shown in the chart, the increases reflect. An a- an anticipated three percent reduction of state operating assistance for urban transit agencies. And then a six percent increase projected inflation escalations. Um, I'm not, that's concludes my part of the presentation. Um, would you like to turn it over to Marie and then we can do questions afterwards, or would you like to do questions now?
Thank you. I just wanted to note the slide you have, the twenty-six POSA. It looks like the numbers on the POSA we have, page eleven, are twenty-four, twenty-five numbers. They're they're a little bit less, so it just may be something that needs to be updated. Cause, thank you.
Apologies.
Oh, no worries.
Great. Uh, my name is Marie Grass. I'm the executive director of the Wave Bus. Did you all get the memo that I shared with? Wonderful, wonderful. Um, so I'll start by just talking a little bit about the services that we have had, and then I'll address the. Changes that we have coming and how that affects the the cost of service here in Scioto. Um, so one of the services that we offer is a door-to-door service. You've heard Ken mention their curb-to-curb. And with door-to-door, we offer going up to the door of somebody's home, making sure that they can get from their home to the bus safely. And then when we get to their destination, we can also walk them. Up to the doors of that destination to make sure again they get from the bus to that place safely. Um, not everyone takes us up on it, but it is part of the service that we offer with door-to-door. It's a demand-responsive service, so as we get calls, we schedule those on our. Um, dispatching system, and then we're a ride-sharing service. So as we get multiple requests for rides going from, say, Scioto Farms to Domino Farms. We'll try and ride-share as much as possible to keep costs lower. Um, so that's our door-to-door service. We have the Community Connector, and that is a fixed route, much like what Ada offers. It goes from Chelsea to Dexter and then to Scioto. Um, and then the final service is the Jackson Road Connector, and that just goes along Jackson Road. Um, historically, the Community Connector and the Jackson Road Connector stop at the same places along Jackson Road. One of the discussions that we had during the twenty-twenty-four meetings was a desire for Wave to match. The frequency that Ada was now doing, arriving at Meyer every thirty minutes. Um, last year, this this current year, fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we were able to get to about forty-five minutes. Um, but what started happening with these two services, um, one of the things that we also have done historically, I should say. Is that we will wait for the Ada bus to arrive at Meyer. To make sure we can pick up those residents and bring them to their home without much wait time. Um, and so what started happening is the two, the Community Connector and the Jackson Road Connector. Every once in a while would start following each other just a few minutes apart. And that's not how we want to use your resources. Um, you want a a frequency of around thirty minutes. So we can match Ada's frequency to Meyer, and so some of the changes that we're proposing. Um, allow us to do that with the Jackson Road in particular. So, um, when I looked at the Community Connector, the one that goes Chelsea, Dexter, Scioto. Um, what I found in the very early morning and in the evening, those last, the first loop and the last loop. Is it was primarily Jackson Road residents. Trying to get home at the end of their workday or their outing and that kinda thing. And so spending the money to have a multi-city connector. Is a lot more than just having a local connector. It also means that your riders aren't spending as much time on the vehicle either. They're getting to their destination much quicker. So what we've done with the Community Connector is we've um shortened the stops. On it, um, we've altered the route a little bit. It will now come down Zeb Road, so the township is now a flex stop. The county office is a flex stop, which just means that people can request it. We don't have a. A poll or anything out here, but if someone asks to stop here, we are happy to do that. Um, and then we take people right to Meyer on the Community Connector. So that decreased your cost significantly. You're paying for less time and you're paying for less stops on that route. Then with the Jackson Road Connector, to accommodate those early morning riders and those evening riders. We've extended that time. Um, so that's one of the reasons you see the cost increase. In addition to, um, as Ken mentioned, there's less state support coming this fiscal year. Um, inflation is around six percent, and then also, um, we've been experiencing a lot of tariff-related increases. As it relates to auto parts, um, and those types of things. So those are the increases you're seeing on that Jackson Road connector line. Um, and then back to door-to-door for a moment, um, when we were, um, in twenty-twenty-four. We were averaging between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and twenty rides a month on the door-to-door service township-wide. Um, this year, we're averaging about four hundred and fifty rides a month, so. Pretty much double, and in the last few months has been around five hundred to six hundred rides a month. So that is a significant increase. We're really excited township residents are using the service. But we're at capacity, and so we do need to increase that cost to accommodate the rides that you have. We're also starting to encourage uh riders who are trying to use the door-to-door service to get from. Just as an example, Lake Stone to Meyer, which is your fixed route. We're encouraging those people to use the fixed route if they are able, and then we're developing an eligibility program. Very similar to what Ada and other transit authorities offer to make sure that that door-to-door service in the fixed route zone. Is really dedicated to people who can't get to the fixed route otherwise, and that'll help protect your costs much long-term. Do you have any questions?
Sure. I I appreciate you both coming tonight and uh presenting to us. Certainly one of the the questions that's top of my mind, and I appreciate, especially you, Marie, and. Just because there was such a large true dollar increase year over year. Uh, one of the things that we we have to look at is we did pass a miller renewal recently. Uh, specifically to fund transit, that's where, uh, generally the funding of transit comes from. The problem is, the way the posa is currently looking is we're seventy-two thousand dollars over what our projection was just for this fiscal year. And that puts us even worse off overall because we're projecting fiscal year twenty-nine. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine depends on how cost increases keep going to. Really run below our fund balance minimum, and. That begins to be a problem in funding um the service. Certainly something we wanna support because. You know, from the true numbers for both of your services, we see people use them, and we see remarkable. Increases in in ridership data, um, but just try and find other ways to be, I guess, more efficient. I know certainly, uh, I like the idea of, you know, consolidating the Community Connector down, um, and reducing frequency. Do you? I I guess just thinking of other out-of-the-box ideas to try and drive some of the cost, uh. Where we can to to more efficient spending, but certainly realize if you don't have the answer on the spot.
Yeah, I'll share a couple of things. Um, one thing I I forgot to mention, and I think it's in the memo. Um, but with the um weekend service in particular, that weekends historically. Are the lowest ridership um across the majority of transit agencies. So when I looked at the data for the Community Connector and the Jackson Road Connector. Um, I was actually able to find a way to combine those two to hit the um hotspots during the hot times of the day. And we actually have a state operations grant that gives us um operations funds to run the weekend service. And so you no longer have to support that weekend service. So that was a another. Efficiency that we were able to accomplish for you all. Um, a a service that I would love. To talk to you guys about piloting a little bit more. I was at a the Michigan Public Transportation Association Conference just last week. And I was talking with um a planner who um had. I don't, we just had a great conversation. One of the stats that he showed me is some of the agencies in a similar. Um, setting as the Wave Bus Service area, mostly rural next to an urban area, but then specifically. Scioto Township and the city of Chelsea, um, just having a much higher utilization of our services. Um, if we moved to a micro-transit model. Um, having offering rides in a in a much smaller area on a pseudo-on-demand way. We could increase uh efficiencies of passengers per vehicle hour from our current two. Which is pretty good on a door-to-door service to per um revenue hour um to four to six. Um, and that's really interesting to me. I'm gonna have some follow-up conversations, but if you'd like, I'm happy. To bring tho- that information back to you and see if that's something that we can try to help keep your costs lower.
I wanna thank both agencies for your work, really appreciate it, and I know we're in extraordinary times with the federal and state cuts. And I expect they'll um continue. Um, my concerns are are simply um financial. You know, we're at the point where the POSA is uh probably exceeding the total revenue. Um, that we bring in through the bus mileage. The projection is here. We've had it since September of twenty-twenty-four. We knew we were gonna have a problem maybe four years out. Now it looks like we have about two years, two and a half years. And and where we're, we simply wouldn't have enough money to continue this contract. Um, you know, we did recently um eliminate the TIF capture, so the revenue will go up a little bit. Our treasurer is doing a good job of getting some um interest. Um, but this is, it's not sustainable, so it's it's, I mean. Even if we were to approve this POSA as is this year. I I really don't see how we could do something similar next year or the year after that, and so. I'm wondering, um, you know, and and it's really a question for the board, just, you know, how much. Planning and how much risk do we wanna take? Um, I'm wondering maybe if we could have more information and conversation offline about. Understanding what are your projections, given all the uncertainties, you know, do we expect. You know, next year to be another sixty-nine percent increase, another nine percent increase, somewhere in between. Um, just so that we can get as real with each other as possible. About where this is going, cause I appreciate there may be pretty extreme federal and state cuts, and I just want us to. Um, be honest and and look at if we need to change or reduce services. You know, this year so that we can continue services in the coming year. I'm not necessarily proposing that. I just think we need to put everything on the table, um, with with as much information as we have. And and certainly we need to identify other sources of funding, but as Ryan said, we just went out. Um, to voters in, what was that? Twenty-four? August twenty-four, yes?
Last year, yep.
So here we are. Thank you.
I have, I have a question. I don't know if you know this yet, but with the the federal and state cuts. And costs increasing, just food and whatnot, do you do you think? Do you see more of um people using the services than you did before? And I don't know if you would be able to know those statistics at this point, because we're just. In the, I I am speculating the beginning.
Yeah, um, I'm seeing at Wave more requests for food access points. And so that um is, I'm seeing more stops actually for Share House and Kuanis as well. I think people are, as you're saying, like they're they're seeing that things are gonna be changing for them. If they haven't already, they will very soon. Um, and so I am starting to see some of those trends changes. Um, and I also wanna say, these hard decisions that you have to make, you're not alone. Um, you are my my only township in my service area that even has a transportation millage. Everyone else has been trying to pay out of their general fund, and specifically the state cuts. Have been significant. Um, on on a rural setting. The state can reimburse up to sixty percent of our eligible expenses. Um, last year it was down to forty. This year it's thirty-four point five, and next year the hap- the budget's not passed, right? But next year it's looking like twenty-eight point nine four, and those are just significant decreases. And so I really appreciate um hearing that, like, we need to have this discussion about where our priorities are. Which services do we want to emphasize? Because that's gonna be important for service providers like us to make sure that we can help move your people where they wanna go.
Thank you, thank you.
And then on the the urban transit side, the. Projected decreases this year on the state level are looking, we were that similar to the uh reimbursements that Wave receives. Uh, for our expected reductions from the state are going from twenty-nine down to twenty-six percent. That's projected because the pu- the budget hasn't been finalized yet for this upcoming year. And then going forward, we also are not exactly sure how those discussions are going to go. So, um, we are totally open to having offline discussions where. We used to have a, it was a transportation subgroup that met periodically. Um, if we'd like to restart that or participate in that, we could do that again. Um, it, just to see how, if we need to restructure things moving forward, we'll happily discuss and then. Try to work out how to go forward with the township with that.
Thank you.
There's also, um. The single, I wrote, uh, single pay, it's a single payer fair.
Yeah, Planning Commission Chair Jan Colbertson had mentioned something at one of our, we had a recent Jackson Road, um, planning meeting. It was a joint meeting between the Downtown Development Authority, the Township Board and the Planning Commission. And one of the things that uh a study that we had commissioned was SEMCOG, where SEMCOG had paid uh the vast majority of the study. Uh, cost was that in order to increase uh transit usage and access, was having a a single payer fare or combined fare system. I know there was some, I I'm sure there's some work between the two entities that has to happen, probably in order to make that happen, but. That was a request we had received that, um, we had been asked to pass along to see how. How that steps, all the steps you done, why you make that happen.
Oh, no, I was just, uh, I'm glad you remembered a lot more than I just wrote down a note, but thank you.
On that side of it, uh, we have had discussions with Jan and the and the subgroup before. That is definitely about the A A T A side, that is going to be more of a long-term discussion, because there's a technology side to it. And there's a policy side that on board, whenever we make fare changes or things like that. Depending on the types of changes they are, the board also has to get, has to uh approve those, so. We can investigate things like that, but I just wanna caution everybody that it's not a short-term thing that could potentially happen within the next year or two. But it's definitely, you know, SEMCOG wants to have that up, uh, we will definitely participate in that.
And I know, um, the RTA, the Regional Transit Authority, is also interested in these. Single fares even across the region to help increase just mobility across the region that they oversee. Um, and I talked with one of the reps uh at this conference last week and. Um, and I talked with one of the reps uh, at this conference last week, and she is still interested in pursuing that technology big differences between agencies is probably the biggest barrier, trying to figure out how to track that, how to reconcile whose fares gets whose, do we split it? Do we all increase so there's not a, a loss of fare revenue? There's a lot of little uh, in intricacies there. Um, so both agencies are interested. It is just gonna be a longer-term project.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Yeah, is uh, John still here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Transportation might be a good thing if you stick with um, that gentleman who spoke before us. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you both, and thank you for us.
Onto new business. Yeah, I guess that, oh, one discussion, well, this is a discussion only, but a presentation by Raymond, or Raymond on audited financial statements of Sia Township for F Y E twenty-five. Hi.
Thank you, Nate, for being here. I also wanna acknowledge um, Rebecca Maadi, um, Finance Manager. Rebecca, do you mind sitting up here in case we have questions? Thank you. I knew I was gonna have to ask you directly. And also Brian Camiller um, from Plant Moran, our interim finance director, um, is also on Zoom here. Um, but I will turn it over to Nate Baldorman, uh, Principal of Raymond and our auditor.
Uh, all right, uh, thank you uh, for your time this evening. Um, tonight, uh, in my presentation, uh, I'm gonna focus uh, primarily on the the audit results, not the financial results that are in the um, the reports that have been issued. You know, wanna start by uh, thanking the township. Uh, we very, very much do value uh, the relationship that we've built here with the township um, and working uh, with all those involved, with Brian and his team, with Rebecca with, and uh, with with all the board. Um, so thank you. Um, when you in included in the finance, the financial statements were issued last week, August twenty-first, first was the opinion date. Um, as a part of the audit, we issued two different documents. We issued the financial statements. And within the financial statements, uh, is included both our audit opinion, obviously your financial statements, and then also includes the report on internal controls. For the audit opinion on the financial statements, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion. Uh, that clean opinion means that the financial statements uh, are fairly stated in all material respects, based uh, in our opinion, uh, based on the work that we performed. Um, so that's the kind of opinion you're looking for, means that you can rely on the information in these reports. So uh, as a part of that audit, uh, we are also required uh, to uh, perform all kinds of procedures. Uh, we have a risk assessment process that we go through. Um, and as a part of that, we also look at the internal controls of the township. Um, it, the purpose though is only to get ultimately to that audit opinion. It's not to give an opinion on the internal control. So uh, I emphasize that to mean that this isn't, you know, uh, some kind of reporter opinion, not an opinion on the internal control systems. Uh, these are just the matters that come to us and we're required to report to you uh, as a part of our audit under auditing standards. So um, as a part of that this year, um, we did issue, we did have three different uh, uh, internal control issues. They're they're in the very last part of the report. Um, three different internal control weaknesses that we consider to be significant efficiencies. Say that's different. Last year, I think we had uh, some material weaknesses as well. Uh, so it's an improvement over the prior year. Um, the the three issues that are in there, uh, they're detailed uh, pre- pretty well in there as well as uh, one of the more thorough viewer responsible officials that we have, which is great. It it talks about how these items are being addressed um, and how uh, you know, these items uh, potentially uh, should be cleared up uh, going forward. So uh, there was a one item, the first item was related to uh, utility, utility billing adjustments. Um, I think is, is what's noted in here. There was, some of this is timing. Uh, we are looking at things and tur- over the entire course of the year. Um, so, you know, I I think part of what's noted is the timing of what what we were looking at. Uh, when we were looking at uh, for the, for most of the year, there was that issue, but there were some pol- policy changes and practices that happened uh, after year end that, um, you know, from our, from our perspective, it should clear things up going forward. I would not expect this one uh, to be present again uh, next year. The next item was a significant audit adjustment. Um, basically, when you're, when you have an audit, anytime the auditors end up finding something as a part of the audit, and an adjustment has to be made, that item is potentially, if there, if if it's an actual adjustment, would be considered uh, a, a finding or or a control issue. So uh, this specific item was related to capital assets, uh, disposal that hadn't been recorded. Um, again, noted in here is the change in practice. Um, again, we would expect that to have, to clear that up in the future. As well. Um, and then the final item, uh, again, this item is something, it's repeated, but it's something that there has been progress on, um, related to unsupported liability balances. Um, there definitely bet, has been headway made on um, getting support for those items, um, reconciling accounts. Uh, I think in the past, when we had been in, there were se- there are several accounts. This has been reduced down. And and much progress has been paid. So it sounds like from the discussions that we had during uh, the audit, that further progress continues to be made on those. So we're hopeful this one will would also go away in the future. So those were the three items that raised to the level that we would, um, they were considered to be significant deficiencies. Um, the other separate letter that we have, uh, is the independent orders communication with those charged with governance. This letter uh, is kind of a form order. There's a lot of things that were required under standing, standards to communicate um, very directly. So those things are included here. Um, things just to point out in this letter, um, you know, this year there was uh, there, in terms of significant accounting, uh, policies and changes in those policies, there was a new standard that had to be implemented. Gatsby one oh one on compensated absences. Basically, the change in the standard was that you had to, you went from, in the past, what was reported was anything that was likely to be paid out upon separation. And you looked at policies and procedures related to that, and that's how you estimated liability. They've now changed it. To where it's, whether it's gonna be paid out at retirement, or somebody's gonna use that benefit, then you have to accrue it. So in general, it's increased liabilities uh, across governments, made things much more complex. I don't know about Brian, but I'm really sick of Gatsby one oh one. Uh, so, um, eh, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Um, so uh, the other thing to note in this uh, in our letter is significant accounting estimates. Um, you know, and the estimates that we point out directly um, are related to uh, your uh, pension uh, liabilities and OPEB liabilities. Uh, those are the biggest estimates in your financial statements. And what we considered to be significant estimates, where we had to put additional time uh, and effort into making sure that those estimates uh, are accurate. So um, and then the next item I would point out, there are a few management letter comments uh, in attachment A. These items uh, mostly relate to uh, your IT systems, those types of things. These items, because they're listed here, don't raise industry level is what we have, the significant deficiencies, material weaknesses. But they're items that we uh, just like to notate, um, that could be further enhanced to improve your internal control structure. So, um, and then attachment B is upcoming changes in accounting standards. Uh, just something that we like to highlight, those things. We talked about Gatsby one oh one with compensated applications. Um, Gatsby one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four are the, are the new next ones upcoming. Um, for, you know, the first one, Gatsby one oh two, certain risk disclosures, this is more, um, it talks about disclosures. It's not gonna change your financial statement amounts. Uh, but this, this new Gatsby really more clearly defines when you have uh, certain uh, certain situations where there's a heightened uh, heightened risk, heightened um, uncertainty, whether it's around funding or around contracts, or uh, if you have with union agreements, those types of things, they're, they're it, it speaks to what should be disclosed. It is not something that we would expect there to be very often, that the disclosure would be required with that. Um, but this, that will be uh, need to be implemented this next year, um, or in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and then one oh three, um, will change a few things, change an order, some order of where things show up in the financial statements. Uh, there will be some additional dis- uh, disclosures related to your budgets. Uh, those budgets will include um, some additional columns, some additional explanations uh, in the supplementary information in the financial statements. Eh, as well as some changes to your proprietary funds, how those are reported. So that's in fiscal year twenty-seven. And then there's another one, and Gatsby one oh four is also in fiscal year twenty-seven. That will be again, one that's just disclosure, it won't include your financial, your, your amount. So uh, really, all three of these are more of disclosure and how things are shown, but not necessarily how mu- how things are measured uh, in your financial statements. Uh, so and then uh, that, that, uh, I I guess the last thing would be uh, the very last page of that is your schedule of adjustments passed. Um, this is just, you know, just pointing out here, there are certain things at times where uh, management may make the decision, township may make the decision to not post certain journal entries. Uh, for whatever reason, these are all related to uh, to leases, um, and sp- and subscription-based information technology arrangements. The, the time that goes into recording those, reporting those, disp- putting the disclosures in, that kinda stuff um, for amounts that aren't material, um, uh, they are above our scope, so we have to kinda show what those are. Um, but, but that's why those are included there. But uh, as you, as, when you look at it, it's, you know, the net impact is minuscule uh, on the financial statements. So that's why those are included there. Um, that's all I had specifically related to the presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you got.
Thank you. Kirk Flintop, uh, Trust Your Eyes or Stir?
Nope, not this time. Thank you.
Um, yeah, just encourage the board to ask questions. I wanna thank everybody. Um, Raymond's been fantastic, stayed on timeline um, within budget, utmost professionals, um, Rebecca, Ryan, Joel, um, Brian, Ally, the whole team. There's about eight or nine people who probably answered about a hundred different questions between the spring and the summer. So I just wanna thank everybody for their good work. Um, I I would just ask Nate, if you'd be so kind to speak to one point that has come up in other recent board meetings, could you describe a little bit about how you approach the subcomponent units such as the DDA when you are um, conducting the audit?
So the component units, as they are in uh, included in your report, um, those items are treated basically like the rest of the township, uh, other than the fact that when, when we look at those, we have to determine materiality. Uh, but we have that in, you know, the general fund has its own materiality levels. That's the same thing with these as well. Um, because you don't have, you know, many times uh, there are separate reports for, for component units, um, it, or many of the municipalities that we work with. Um, and sometimes they have different orders, but that's not the case here. So we do audit it just like anything else here. Um, and again, we're doing our procedures just like we would any of the other funds. Just, we have to look at them for the, for the materiality levels. That's really the, the, the difference. But we do have that component materiality.
Thank you. Thank you. Does Reable have anything?
I appreciate all the, the work that Clerk Flintopt was done, as well as everyone else on the team, and uh, appreciate your team's good work. I appreciate you getting back to me on all my recent emails. Uh, so thank you.
Trusty Branch?
I've seen this one time already, so I don't have any questions, but um, I do understand the amount of work that goes into that. So I think, I thank our staff, I thank our um, auditors. I think our elected officials.
Um, I don't have any questions, and I thank you for the work that went into this. And everyone else on the board who contributed.
Rusty Reed, do you have?
No, I have no questions, but just again, like the rest of the board, thank you very much for the work everyone put into this.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you to everybody, um, the team, um, Rebecca, Raymond, um, PM Gap, anyone, everyone. And I have to say that um, I've been on the board for a couple of years now, and also before that, I was a very involved resident. So I have read a lot of audits. And I have to say that our um, our township here and everyone that's helped has, it's really improved a lot. This is really exciting. So next year, we won't have any findings at all. So thank you.
And so uh, procedurally, it's already been submitted to the state. Um, we'll have a, the PM Gap will be submitting the F sixty-five. Um, we will have a deficit elimination plan coming back to the board um, related to a special assessment fund, which is um, similar to what we did last year. But aside from that, I just wanna note that it's August, and I'm very pleased that we're submitting all these reports this month instead of close to the deadline of September thirtieth.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much, Nate. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Next is O two, uh, Piper Ridge Conditional Resoning. Please come to the table.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Brad Botham. I'm here on MI Homes.
Hello.
Hello.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna raise my hand here, and I've got a little presentation.
And Brad, how do you spell your last name?
D as in boy, O, T as in Tom, H A M.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So uh, firstly, I'd like to go through a little bit of background of our company. Um, a little bit of background on our company. Uh, so MI Homes was founded in nineteen seventy-six. We're headquartered out of Columbus, Ohio. Uh, we are publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange, and we are one of the nation's leading home builders by volume. Uh, we do roughly, I don't know, nine thousand homes. Uh, we're na- nationwide, we're the thirteenth largest builder in the US. And since incorporation, uh, we've delivered over a hundred and fifty thousand homes uh, to happy homeowners. Uh, here locally, uh, in the Detroit division, we delivered over three hundred homes last year, uh, which makes us a top-three builder by volume throughout Metro Detroit and Greater Ann Arbor. So tonight, we're here to discuss a sixty-seven unit townhome plan that went before Planning Commission uh, back in April. Um, after some feedback, we went back and modified our site plans and resubmitted those plans to P C uh, back for a July meeting. Uh, here I've got a summary of the, excuse me, revisions that we made. Uh, we no longer encroach into any setback. Uh, we meet the parking requirement under the ordinance. Uh, we revised our plans to reflect appropriate pedestrian access to the Sileview community to the south. Uh, we committed to offering solar-ready and EV charging capabilities in all of our homes. And we made efforts to reduce the number of trees were, that were, that were being removed uh, in, in efforts to preserve woodlands. So the grading changes that we made, which resulted in five of the buildings now having partial view outs or view out basements. Allowed us to reduce the number of trees that we had initially showed as being removed by twenty point seven percent. Now I'd like to discuss some of the objectives of Piper Ridge that are consistent with the Siobhan Township's future land use and master. So to us, one of the primary objectives of this community is that we want to provide attractive, affordable housing. To first time home buyers so that they either remain in the township or move into the township. We're anticipating. Average sale prices in the low to mid four hundreds, which from a new construction standpoint does not exist anywhere in the township. We're also utilizing the clustered townhome design with our community. This is within the high density residential designation of the future land use. To offer housing variety to young professionals as well as starter families. So again, that's the, you know, to keep. People who are currently renting or living with parents to stay within the township or to attract people from neighboring municipalities to become residents. We're promoting a sense of community walkability as well as light recreation through pathway connectivity to Saginaw Forest. So our we have a proposed pathway that runs across Grossbeck, ties into the Silo View property to the south. And their pathway network runs all the way to the east with the connection pointing to the Saginaw Forest. This specific location being inville surrounded by single family to the south, multifamily to the west. And light industrial and office uses to the to the north, vacant land to the east. The one of the objectives of this community was to advance the mixed use node goals, node goals, excuse me, of the Jackson Road overlay. Another thing that I noticed within the master plan. Is that there's a a desire to support higher density within sewer service districts. And this is one of the. Last remaining in-vill properties that is serviced by sanitary. So we felt that a higher density use was permitted here. Some additional discussion points that I'd like to bring up, you know, we had no neighbor objection to the project. In fact, we had one neighbor Linda Smith. The original developer of the Silo View project come out speaking in favor of the project. And I I noticed tonight that there's been a lot of discussion with regard to federal and state budget shortfalls. So I just kind of wanted to give high level. Of potential property taxes that would be generated by this community. So if you guys were to approve this community, assuming a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar sale price or two hundred and twenty thousand dollar SEV per unit. Given the current village, this this project would generate over half a million here in property tax for township. In addition to the water and sewer taxes and usage fees that would be generated. Here we've got some representative front elevations, and this is very similar to a project that you had approved. In fact, it's the same elevations that you guys had approved. For our. Townsend Honey Creek project over in the Menards surplus land. Some side and rear elevations. As well as what this architectural style looks like constructed. So this is one of our communities located within Indiana. And you'll see on subsequent slides that this style fits very well with what is currently built with the surrounding land uses. So this is. One of the homes that's currently built in Silo View that's adjacent to the south of our proposed Piper Ridge project. Another elevation of the Martos. Within that same community. This is Gallery Park. This is adjacent to the south. This is Linda Smith's project. And then I kind of I also wanted to show Eagle Point, which is the apartment community to the west. And you'll see this is much more traditional in nature, a little bit dated. And we feel that our architectural style is substantial improvement from from this. So in essence, we think we believe that. Our architectural style will will enhance the area. And again, this is the somewhere co-housing, which is adjacent to the west of the Eagle Point Apartments that I just showed. And that completes the presentation.
Yeah, could you show us the photo again of what you are proposing?
Sure. This is just one of the color styles, but this is the this is the elevation that that we propose.
This is the type of structure you are proposing building?
Correct. But it's a townhome community, so there'd be, you know, a handful of them in a row.
Do you have any other photos of it?
You had a wrong elevation there.
See, that looks different.
Yeah, you're just you're here. You're just seeing the.
It's the three D.
So this is a this is a constructed home and the other ones are just two dimensional. The renderings are two dimensional. This is taking kind of a diagonal view of the property or of the structure.
Well, trustee Riser, go ahead.
These are can you go over the these are connected. They're.
Correct.
They're they're single family homes.
They're they're attached townhomes.
Okay. And so they're attached and they're single. It's not a condo. It'd be single family. You buy this one, you buy that one, and there's common area?
Correct. That's correct. Yeah, you would have ownership of the everything within your four walls, and then the homeowners association would maintain the exterior structures of the building.
Okay, the H O A.
Correct.
Are there any? How about like? Parks amenities, things like that. I know you're close to Saginaw, but they're they're like a. All right, who's your target? I know the previous site was. You know, fifty five plus community.
Yep. Yeah, so our our target demographic here is. Young professionals with an upward trajectory as far as their career earnings are concerned. And then young starter families who are looking to.
So what do you have for the kids? You got playgrounds, you got swingsets?
So that was one of the points that came up during planning commission. And I had amended one of our conditions of approval to incorporate activated recreation space. If we were to get to preliminary, you know, if we were to get to the site planning approval stage of this process. So if the if we were to move forward with the conditional rezone tonight, we would still have to come back to planning commission. And township board for preliminary site plan approval, and that's not even would be addressed at the preliminary site plan approval stage. But but it is it is one of the conditions of our conditional zoning was.
You're permitted to like a. Like a part of something for families?
Yeah, we're we're looking at. Most likely this stretch in between here between buildings ten, thirteen, twelve, and eleven shown on the plan.
Could you point that out again? I don't see where there's room.
Yeah, so we some of the trees, you have to meander some walking pathways pathways through the parking areas. And, you know, we just haven't investigated that because we we haven't. We haven't gotten to the stage where that would be incorporated into the site plan. We we don't we don't resubmit anything to come from planning commission to the board.
And. Infrastructure. You know how close you are to the closest bus stop?
I do not know that information offhand, but I would imagine it's it's up on Jax somewhere up on Jax.
And how? Is it it's dumpsters or individual large? Cars?
Individual.
Pardon?
Individual.
And then you can. All those trucks can get around that little that space. Of course, that would be part of the.
Yeah, I mean, we would design. We would design to meet the standards of the township.
So just to clarify, you have not gone through site plan approval. You're just here for conditional rezoning.
Correct.
I'm I know. Thank you. Just test and writer. I did.
Trying to keep you on topic.
Which way are we going?
Start down at that end.
Okay, you're accordingly topped. If you have anything.
Come back to me, please.
Okay, Treasury April.
Yep, thank you very much. You're about twenty six hundred feet from the nearest bus stop. I pull up Google Maps.
Would you save mine?
Yeah, just just answer that question. Since you brought it up, I'll ask, it does necessarily pertain to this project, but I am curious. Are you involved in the approved project that you guys have down Menards or no?
I was not personally involved in that.
Okay. Okay, just curious. I I think one of my main concerns with this, I like. The density, this is a good area for it with the public services. The fact that we do have a relatively close by bus stop, water and sewer service. I just hate how many trees we have to cut down. I I realize that's sort of a function of the site. Unfortunately, it has a lot of trees there and. We don't always get to choose where the trees grew up. Grew. But that that's definitely a strong consideration I'm having here is, you know, I I appreciate you guys reworking the plan to. Minimize the impact that you could have and still have a sellable product and something that makes sense, but. It's still is a lot of trees to cut out and I realize it's going to pay into the tree fund and that's that's great, but. It just. But I I overall, you know, I think the product will sell. Not that that's really our purview. It's definitely a product that's in demand and I see would be good for the community, but. That that's what I'm struggling with is, you know, the natural features impact on the site and and what we can do to, you know. Way that out with. All the rest of the good. So thanks.
One thing. Speaking of trees. When it was proposed back in two thousand nineteen, didn't they clear a lot of trees at that point? It seems like it was, I remember driving by it. It was after. That proposal. And it was, yeah, pretty clear. And then when I drove by, you know, a couple of years later, there was a lot of brush that had grown up or.
I'm I'm not familiar with whether they whether they perform any clearing activities or not on on that site.
Okay.
I mean, we we did a new tree survey as part of our as part of our submittal.
Okay.
I could answer to that.
Sure, please. In the two thousand nineteen approved PUD plan. The. Details said there were one thousand five hundred twenty one trees on that property. The survey that MI Homes did is less than five hundred trees. That's concerning. Not for MI Homes, but for the prior developer.
Yeah.
And I I would just say we I I checked before the meeting, we have not received any contribution to the tree fund from that developer.
And also contribution to the sidewalk? Did we receive that?
I need to confirm that. I believe that we did receive the contribution for the sidewalk, that thirty thousand for the Parkland sidewalk.
Yes. I'm on the planning commission. I did not support this project. I added some supplemental information to the packet, which gives you aerial views of the surrounding. Properties to the east. And also note that this property is in the. Huron River Water Council Bio Reserve area. It shows that. Well, before they cut down over a thousand trees, there was a large amount of continuous hardwood forest. If you look at the tree survey provided for this application. There's something like four hundred and seventy trees. I only counted I counted less than ten that were invasive. Maybe I had the number slightly wrong, but that's a very healthy woodland. Also to note. This plan. Eliminates over three hundred of those remaining trees. So within a six year timeframe. More than twelve hundred trees have been removed from that site, whether the prior developer was allowed to do that or not. But this plan then takes out the what was called a woodland barrier, a hundred feet woodland barrier from the prior. Project. It decimates that. This developer is claiming a certain amount of. Open space, but that open space is attained by cutting down trees. I I object to that. What else was I going to say? Further. This site, this land is currently zoned PUD. The PUD. What was approved was ninety five units. This is less density than what was approved in the PUD. We're going backwards on this. We're going backwards on density. We're going backwards on removing natural features. If we approve this, in my humble opinion. The property is owned PUD. It has certain rights that go with it. If we approve this, we give more rights than currently go with that land. And I object to that. I don't know why the prior developer did not finish this. Could have been COVID. I have no idea. Could have been Heritage Woods for all we know. But I don't think that. I don't think government is it's in the interest of government to. Take away risk from a developer that may have occurred in the past five years. And take and assume that we will fix that situation. That's not the purpose of government. The property is what it is right now. I think we should keep it as a PUD. To retain the trees that are there. And to get. Higher density, a higher density development. Then would be realized with this. Project.
Just one point, this project, this property was zoned MR three prior to it going.
Yep, we're fully aware of that, but once it was rezoned to PUD. That is the condition for which you would buy this property. Right? You would buy this property without this rezoning request. As a PUD, the PUD. Travels with the land. So it's immaterial whether that was MR three in the past. Siobhan Township Board approved a PUD, which I think we should. Continue that zoning.
I have a few questions and then I have comments. But I'm wondering, are we just asking questions now or do you want in our comments now too?
Go ahead.
Okay, okay. I. Look at your plan and. Most. Of which you're referring to as preserved space. Isn't usable space for recreation. And it doesn't look that way to me. I'd like you to comment on that and point out to me. Where? I know you pointed to that one spot, but. Where else would the active recreation be on the property?
As we stand today, the the really the only area that we would be able to activate open spaces, this interior pocket. Between units ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen in the in the center of the center of the layout.
So you did say this was geared toward young families with presumably some will have. Young children and I'm just there's no playground or anything shown for that. And I understand that this is a conditional rezoning. But one of my concerns is with a conditional rezoning. The process then commits the township to a very specific site plan. And this limits the ability of the township to require changes in the future. I know that Laura Krebs, our planner. Is. On Zoom tonight. And I do have a few more questions, but I would like her to comment a bit on. This fact that. The conditional rezoning. Commits the township to a specific site plan and. And I do also want to ask you questions about there are five Gelman dioxide, in, dioxide monitoring wells on the site. I couldn't find them on the, wha- what was included in our packet, but I was told they were shown.
Yeah, they're shown on the, the.
Which one? Which exhibit shows them? Can you point them out to us?
They would be on page. We can see them on page two of the, well, page two and three of the site plan that was submitted. So if you look and point them out, I'll share. There are two of them here. There's one here. And there may be, I believe there's Four, four of those five have no, no dioxide detected. Uh, one of them has dioxide detected, uh, at below residential cleanup criteria. So I spoke to the gentleman who installed and monitors those wells. And the plan for the, the ones that are, have no dioxide detected is to abandon them. And given the trajectory of the, the one well that currently has dioxide detected, based on the, look, the downward trajectory of the detection levels over the last thirty years, uh, there's a high likelihood that that one will be, will be abandoned as well, um, or relocated.
Did you include any of that material in our packet? The well testing or any of that?
Uh, I did not, but there, it's, it's well publicized. Uh, in fact, the township publishes it on its website or the, or Washington County does, or maybe it's Eagle or, or a combination thereof.
Yeah, I think it's, it may be Eagle, but I just, since it's relevant to this location, I thought maybe you would have included some of that.
And sure, so you're suggesting that there's documented, um, something documented from Eagle that they're going to abandon wells?
Yes.
And that would have been helpful to have in the packet too.
Understood.
Kathy, what typically is the process? I'm unfamiliar. I thought you might know about abandoning wells. Isn't that a Eagle?
Makes that determination.
Okay, and aren't we typically notified when that happens?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But Eagle i- is in charge of that completely.
Great, thank you.
I will say the, um, dioxide testing levels vary considerably. And sometimes they go down, sometimes they go up and it's, it, you can't usually say there's a trajectory.
Uh, well, they, the wells on this site, a test for, there's, it's been zero for, for a decade.
Okay, so some of them are zero that, I get that, but the one that is contaminated, I'm saying I would definitely have liked to have seen the data on that one.
I'm happy to get the data.
Okay. So, um, I want to know also that the, the planning commission raised issues about the number of buildings on the site and asked you to reduce the number. Um, however, you didn't. And the P U D that was previously approved offered senior living options as we've discussed here tonight. Many consider that to be a public benefit to the community. And I'd like you to point out to us, I know this, you're not doing a P U D, you're doing just a conditional rezoning, but I just want to point out that we haven't heard any public benefit or you haven't talked about that tonight.
I think just as providing senior housing, new senior housing would as a public benefit, just the same as providing a, affordable, affordable new construction for residents where otherwise it would be unattainable.
I know you've characterized this as affordable housing, but low four hundreds for many people isn't considered affordable housing. I mean,
Or new construction in greater Ann Arbor, uh, certainly is.
Okay. Um, and no more questions at this time.
Kristy Reed?
I have, uh, I have several problems with this and I'm probably, I'm not really supportive of this, but, um, I'm curious, what does it mean to dedicate a parking lot to the township? You're gonna put a plaque in the town, on the parking lot? I mean, what, what does that mean?
The, the dedication process would just mean that it would be under the, no, no different than, uh, the dedication of a road network. It would be under the, the jurisdiction or the, the maintenance requirement would be, would fall on the.
But it would still be on your property?
Correct.
Okay, um, I, I don't think that's a good thing for the township to take responsibility of maintaining something on, on private property. HOA should take care of that, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that was just a, a, an existing condition of the original P U D, which is why we put it in there. I mean, we have no objection to maintaining it.
Okay. What specifically does readiness for solar and E V charging mean specifically? Is it a plug in the garage?
D- David, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Good evening. My name is David Strom, uh, with M I Homes. I was the, I guess, the face for M I Homes when we, uh, uh, brought the honey, Towns that Honey Creek, you know, the that's the base for M I Homes at that time. And it's a, uh, similar provision that we, uh, shared with the township board at that time. And the, uh, you know, the preparation for, uh, car charging stations and solar power, uh, solar power process, you know, it's just that for folks that would choose to add those features to the home, would have the infrastructure in place and the tie-ins to the, uh, uh, electrical panel into that, uh, to there you go, allow folks to add those features.
So there's space on the panel or there's wiring pull of a certain voltage or capacity? What does that mean?
There's, there's not wiring pulled, but it would be, uh, it would be the conduit that would allow that, you know, wiring to be added in the future should someone choose to.
So you've got conduit and space on the breaker. Pardon me? You've got conduit and then space on the panel?
Yes.
Well, uh, it, it doesn't mean anything. I mean, you're gonna run the conduit, but you don't know where the panels are gonna be. So how do you know where to run the conduit?
They're, they're gonna know where the panel's going to be. This is, it's site work, it's site civil work where they're prepping the whole site for construction. If they run conduit to each individual building, an electrician that mules tape can do it in under an hour, run, run the wire into the panel that they need probably another hour to hook it into the panel. It's common.
Okay, I mean, it was all done on the spot in my house, so I can't imagine how you plan for the future, but, um, what about batteries? Will, will you, will the homeowners be able to have batteries? In their, you know, solar powered batteries to back up their home? Tesla Powerwalls, does that ring a bell?
You know, I suppose the, the, you know, the homes could be, uh, you, you know, battery power could be accommodated at the homes as well.
Well, because that means a difference in how the breaker box is wired. So my point is if you're gonna be truly E V uh, powering and solar panel powering, it means a different way of wiring the breaker box, so, um, I'm just letting you know that, um, I have to say this, looking at that layout, I don't know if you were familiar with Levittown? That reminds me of Levittown and that's not a compliment. Um, there's no playgrounds, there's no community center for, for community meetings or family functions. You only have nine visitor spots for all those homes. Now, you may have a hundred and forty-seven parking spots, but I think that includes the garages and the driveways. But you only have nine visitor spots from what I can see on your plan, so.
Yeah, it would include the driveways.
Yeah, so it kind of limits, maybe even prohibits having a Thanksgiving gathering, a large family having a Thanksgiving gallery. So, um, you know, if this is, if, if you're looking for families, you're not really making it easy. Um, I understand the planning commission asks for minimally a playground and what you're committing to is incorporating active recreation space for the community. And I don't see anywhere in there that you can have other than a mowed lawn, which obviously would have to be mowed every week or but basically just a place to throw frisbee, but there's no basketball court, no tennis court, no pool, no community center. This is, I think, what did you call it, John? A, a, uh, uh, I forget what you called the one up on, the one we're gonna be talking about later. Uh, anyway, a compound, you call it a compound, right? No? Okay. Um, this, this, it, it just, to me, um, I would expect that as a responsible developer, you would be thinking about the quality of life you're offering those people who would buy your home, not just your bottom line. What have you got against trees? And Kathleen, you surprised me because I think I was on the board when we approved the, um, at previous development and I don't remember having them, we approving a removal of a thousand trees.
Well, no, I don't think you did approve that.
Okay. Um, that's interesting though, the five hundred that are, the four some odd that are left are all hardwood, so.
Well, they're, they're good quality trees.
Non-native, right, or native, I should say.
Natives.
Yeah. But what's interesting, you're killing two-thirds of the tree on the property and all twenty-seven landmark trees. You're killing them all. Um, paying a fee to kill a massive amount of trees is not the purpose of the tree fund. It's not a get out of jail free card. Um, so I think some of the developers think, well, I can just mow down a thousand trees. I'll just write a check, it'll be fine. No, it won't. Oddly enough, some of the trees listed on page four to be killed are not depicted on page three with an X. Example, tree number seventy-five oh four and landmark trees nine-nine-six, nine-nine-nine and ten thousand. Those are not marked with an X, but they're marked, but they're, um, stated be removed, so that seems a little disingenuous to me. But I said, as I said, I was on the board that approved the previous plan and it was, um, a lot more resident, what do we say? Was it ninety?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, um, ninety-five residences with a much, well, it was approved for a much less destructive footprint than yours. So I guess if you want my vote, come back to us with a more concentrated development that saves two thou- two-thirds of the trees rather than killing.
To follow up on something, uh, David said, the applicant could come back wi- with a P U D proposal and incorporate some of these ideas that we're proposing here tonight. I have concerns with the conditional rezoning process and the fact that it commits the township to a specific site plan. And what we're hearing tonight is vague with some of the issues that I'm concerned about with that site plan. So I would say I don't support this conditional rezoning, but the developer could certainly come back again and submit a different plan.
Go ahead.
Um, sure, just kind of more of a, a question for the board, but also for the applicant or Laura. I mean, because it wasn't so long ago, it was twenty nineteen, we approved this, um, P U D and then the subsequent agreement in, I think, twenty twenty-two. Um, but the final motion at the board was in twenty nineteen when we decided to rezone this to a P U D. So kind of a, a question I have is, um, I mean, what conditions have changed to, to justify a rezoning? And I, it's just really a question for anybody. What, what would be the pitch to be made or the argument to be made for what conditions have changed?
Yeah, Laura's on. Laura, I have a question for Laura as well. Laura?
Hey, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Laura.
Yes.
So there's a couple, I'll answer Jessica's question, but I'm gonna, um, talk about a couple of things. I know Kathy had some things, so I'm gonna, I wanted to first talk about the original P U D, so I think this is an appropriate time to start that, um, conversation. The original P U D does have an expiration, so while the property is currently zoned P U D, that plan is expired. So even if that project were to want to, um, regroup and decided that they were ready to develop the property tomorrow, we would have to go back through the P U D process from the beginning, we're in a re- at a rezoning with a preliminary P U D plan and then approve a final P U D plan through the planning commission and the township board. That would be a much easier process since that's already a plan that, um, you know, that the planning commission and the board had previously approved with a development agreement, et cetera. But, um, even though it's zoned P U D currently, that plan is expired. Um, the, the applicant is proposing a conditional rezoning. So that means, um, they're requesting from P U D conditionally to the M R three multifamily zoning district that is, um, in, um, does comply with the ma- current master plan. Um, the conditional zoning, rezoning is the same process, um, as a, a straight rezoning, except that the applicant offers voluntary conditions for the planning commission and the township board to consider as part of that rezoning. Um, as part of their, um, request, they submitted this layout, the site plan. Um, of course, there's additional, um, items that we would review during, during site plan review, some of the very specific questions that, um, uh, trustee Ryzer brought up about, um, trash, um, fire, uh, template, turning templates, um, et cetera. Those are details that we would look at, um, in the future under the site plan application. Um, but we would anticipate that this would be the layout, um, that, that the developer would be um, seeking approval for, um, during that site plan process. Brad noted, um, that there were, um, six, can, there were six conditions that they brought to the planning commission for consideration. They added a seventh. Those are noted in the background materials and in the, um, planning commission's motion. Uh, and several of those are taken from the previously approved, um, development agreement with the Parkland Plaza Senior Living Facility, including, um, that parking lot and, um, uh, the, the, um, pedestrian access, et cetera. So, um, I'm happy to answer any other questions, um, that you may have for me.
I have a question for you. So if the P U D, if the P U D plan has expired, does it revert to the prior zoning or does it remain a P U D in perpetuity for a fifty-five plus age community, uh, ninety-five unit structure?
So it, it can't just revert automatically, it has to be rezoned. So the township hasn't been, um, it hasn't, in my, in my experience with the township, they have not initiated rezoning of parcels, um, on their own without an applicant necessarily, unless it's a large scale, um, change, uh, you know, that encompasses like a whole district or something. So the township has not initiated a reversion of a P U D i- in my tenure with the township in the last fifteen years.
Do other, do other municipalities do that so that parcels don't lay fallow?
I have not, in my experience, no. None of my communities have done that. And there, there have been P U Ds that have expired. Usually they're waiting for, um, someone either to come ba- the P U D to be, um, re- you know, reinstated by a new applicant or they go through a new rezoning process like we're doing here.
So why not just revert it to, to M R three, which is, is, is it M R three an appropriate zoning for that parcel in that section of our township? Given the adjacent land uses?
Yes, and that is, that is, um, in, in, in compliance with the master plan, yes.
So, so if this were M R three, So, so if this were MR-three without conditions, what would be the disadvantage to anybody, the township or the developer?
Well, the MR-three would allow, um, this development potentially by right without, eh, without any conditions at all. Um, and so that, you know, that's the same, um, uh, zoning designation as Aubrey Grove. And so the applicant, i- if this was MR-three, an applicant could come to us just through the site plan process, um, without the conditional rezoning, uh, or a PUD.
But we made a PUD for a project that for whatever reason didn't work.
Yeah.
Yes.
Based on market forces or whatever, and these guys ain't in the senior citizen building, you know, one, one structure for seniors business, probably, they have a product that they focus on, I assume, I don't know that, I don't speak for these guys, never met them. Okay.
But they purchased a PUD.
No, I understand that, uh, either on spec, because I thought they could do their thing and get a result, or, no, I, I appreciate that they've got risk, or maybe they haven't even purchased it, they've got the right to purchase, or an option, I don't know, that is, yeah. Okay, thank you, Laura Krebs.
Laura? Um, okay, so, so it's a PUD without a site plan at this point? If it stays a PUD, PUD?
It's a, it's a PUD that had a previously approved site plan that has expired.
Okay, so it's, okay, um. Why did the planning commission approve this? They must have had reasons, and I'm, I'm going through, and I, I know that some, um, are not in favor of it, but overall.
Overall, it's supported by the master plan. It is, um, eh, there are a variety of zoning designations, including different housing types within this area of the township. It's within the water and sewer district, so it is in an area of the township that, um, the planning commission and, and the township board in the, in the adopted master plan have designated as an area for development. They felt, um, you know, that, you know, it's been a priority of the township to provide housing and a variety of housing types. So, so those were the reasons discussed during the planning commission meeting. Um, I, they did discuss prior to the meeting where they made the motion to recommend approval, um, discussing the elimination of buildings, um, the trees, the natural features. Um, and they had a subcommittee that met with the developer and they, they talked through, um, those issues. Um, the developer did, you know, as he stated, um, at all the wetland setbacks, uh, re- did reduce the tree removal. So, so they felt that, um, the need for housing and in this area of the township where, uh, water and sewer is available, uh, they felt, they felt this was, um, a project, a good project, so.
Okay, so I understand this is about, um, conditional rezoning. However, this, the site plan or that your proposed plan at this point, could that not be a, a PUD?
So the, this particular, this particular site plan would not meet some of the PUD criteria.
Okay.
There's open space criteria, there's buffering criteria, et cetera, and this plan would not meet.
Okay.
Would not meet some of those.
So in the past, there was twelve-hundred trees, you said, or something like that?
One thousand five hundred and twenty-one, I have the, um, the minute, the minutes from the August thirteenth, twenty-nineteen, um, Board of Trustees.
That's what was removed?
No, um.
That was what was on there?
Yeah, so, so it says, um, this is just a portion of it, I'll just highlight this, um, they talk about, um, essentially paying for a certain number of trees, uh, township to identify funding for a hundred and eighty-six trees. And then further where they make the motion, it says, "In lieu of the requirement of twenty trees and a hundred and twenty shrubs as greenbelt planting, no new trees or shrubs are required to be planted in the greenbelt area along Parkland Plaza Drive because of the one thousand five hundred and twenty-one existing greenbelt trees to remain." So sometime between this date and when, um, M.I. Homes did their tree survey, it's now less than five hundred.
And Kathleen, if I could just jump in, I was reading alongside paragraph nine of the, um, development agreement, and the language there in paragraph nine, nine-point-one matches what you said with the exception that it does not say because of the fifteen, one thousand.
Five hundred and twenty-one.
Five hundred and twenty-one trees. So I'm not disputing what you're saying, because that was August twenty-nineteen, and then this was a development agreement effective February twenty-twenty-one.
Well, the, um, Ryan Tre- Treasure Yeaple has pulled up, um, a.
I, I, I want to be fair to the applicant. I think the tree removal was done without their involvement in the, the, the project, certainly they are going to remove some additional trees, but the massive amount of tree removal, as evidenced by Google or satellite imagery, was done before their involvement with this parcel, so they don't want us to get bogged down.
No, but, but this board should deal with that separately.
Yes, and, but the, it keeps coming up that, well, um, we want to save more trees, we do want to save trees, but a lot of trees have already been removed in the perimeter, it looks like it hasn't. And from the time that they were removed, and I remember driving by and going, oh my God, look, there's no trees. But, um, and some of it has grown back, but I don't know, have, was there a tree study? Because if, in this area, we had buckthorn and black locusts.
Yeah.
And they grow really fast, so that may be in the center there. Um, and if your, your plan that you had, and you're, some of these board members are talking about, um, uh, play structures or whatever for children, and you'd have to remove more trees for that.
Or less buildings.
Less buildings.
Well, that could be as well.
Are we at deliberation stage now and done with questioning of these gentlemen?
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm torn, and the, you know, I understand about having more units, but more units, that means it would be probably one or two structures with people on top of each other. Um, and we, I know that there's some people that don't want to live in apartments, they want to have a home, e- even if it's a townhome. You, I know you're connected with other homes, but you, you still have more of a space, um. Okay. Kind of torn here.
I'm gonna support this, I would frankly support it going back to MR-three without the conditions that they've offered to supply, but they didn't. I think we need more housing, I realize that trees have down and, and, but trees come down when houses are built to support families. This is a dense, um, development, uh, and this is a development in our water and sewer district. I, I don't want, like, I don't want the parcel to remain vacant, waiting for a senior center for fif- one, one building.
Senior.
Seniors, uh, see, I, I don't mean senior center, I'm talking, hell, I'm over age fifty-five. Uh, senior housing i- in a sense, you know, a single structure. Um, I, I, I'm gonna support this, um, don't know if the, the rest of the board will, because it's what this township needs in the Jackson Road corridor, where we have water and sewer and density and access, access of the sidewalks inside of you. They're not like, not, you know, the, some neighborhoods don't want you coming in and they put up fences, and here where we have the interconnectivity of the, of the neighborhoods with sidewalks and the proximity to Jackson Road and to Saginaw Forest. You know, I, I'm all about little swing sets and playgrounds inside, in, inside neighborhoods, and I hope that they can do that, and we'll get a chance to, to, to check them on that when they bring it back, and maybe they'll sell one less house and put something there, but I'm gonna support the conditional rezoning at this juncture. That's going to be my vote whenever it's put to a vote.
Could I ask you a question to the planner?
Sure.
Based on what, uh, Mr. Riser just said, um, I think there's some confusion about what would be allowed, would be required in this PUD. It is not required, to my knowledge, that it become a senior living facility. That's, that does not go with the land. So you, Mr. Riser, you, you continue, you're saying that, but that's not what.
So what can go there then? What, what, what's allowed in the PUD?
It, well, it says in the development agreement that the project is intended to be developed as an active adult residential community ages fifty-five or older, consisting of one structure containing ninety-five dwelling units. So yes, that's exactly what the PUD is, eh, was approved for.
But that doesn't, that does not carry forward, correct, Laura? It doesn't have to be of one building with, for, um, senior living.
So, so the, i- it doesn't have to be, but any PUD, whether it's the same, let's say it's, let's say it's the same Parkland Plaza, it's called something else, it's a senior living facility, and they wanted to build the same PUD site plan that was originally approved, that has to go back through the whole rezoning process again. If it's, uh, 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 just an apartment building, that's a ninety-five unit apartment building that wants to utilize the existing site plan, that has to go back through the whole process again.
Right.
If it's a totally different PUD, if it's a townhome development, um, like this one, i- and they wanted it to be a PUD, it would have to completely go back through the whole process. So it's result, it's zoned PUD, but the site plan is expired. So any, any modification to the PUD starts from the beginning. So it's, it's the same, it's the same process that we're going through now with the conditional rezoning, and it would be the same process if it, if someone wanted to revert it back to just a regular MR-three, or if they wanted to rezone it to commercial, um, we'd be going through the same process. Does that make sense?
So tonight, that, what's in front of us is just, I don't see a model motion, but this would be for us to vote for the, the unconditional.
So the model motion is to direct staff
Yeah.
to draft a resolution of approval or denial for the conditional rezoning from PUD to MR-three. And it was, and then a resolution will come before you at your next meeting, um, for a, for a adoption. Based on what you, what you determine this evening.
I would move that planning and legal staff direct a, to the, to direct legal and, I move to direct legal and planning staff to draft a resolution of approval of the, uh, conditional rezoning uh, to MR-M three in, uh, in the rezoning OA number two-five-zero-zero-two. Piper Ridge.
Is there support?
Just want to make sure I get the motion correctly, John, if I could, to direct legal and planning staff to draft a resolution of approval of conditional rezoning to MR-three of.
The OA number two-five-zero-zero-two, uh, Piper Ridge conditional rezoning.
Thank you.
It's not lost on me, there's not a second. Yeah.
I will second this.
Motion by Riser, support by Carrie.
Call the question, but, will we roll please?
Yes, um, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call, per our rules of order tonight, we're starting with, um, myself, Flint Haft. Flint Haft, no. Brant?
No.
Noel?
No.
Reed?
No.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
No.
Motion fails, two to five.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Do we need another motion to deny that, or does that, does that be for the?
You, you want a resolution of denial?
Yeah, that's, yeah, i- is that an appropriate thing to do?
That would be an appropriate thing to do.
Okay.
And you need another motion to?
No, I, I appreciate that, um.
And make a motion to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial.
You want the same language as the other, but the sound denial.
Just what he said, I.
Just what I said, Bert.
Okay, is there?
I'll support.
So a motion by Yeaple, support by Noel, to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial.
Roll call, please.
Flint Haft, yes. Brant?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
No.
Carrie?
No.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there support for the break? Oh, attorney Bing gives you support, okay.
I should, okay.
Okay. We have, we have lots of support here, so five, five minutes, what time do we have?
Nine-thirty-six.
Okay, how about nine forty-one?
Sure.
Three-one.
I, I'll see if that works.
I would have gone for nine forty.
Well, I have nine thirty-seven.
He just finished.
Okay, nine forty-two.
Can I pass a copy of the presentation?
I can help do that.
You know, our, our breath is really too tough, and you, then you brought those today.
It's a copy of the presentation and a little memo, I just noticed some of you looking at different screens, I don't know if you have it on your computer, but might be helpful.
Yeah.
How many are there? Should be enough for everybody.
Yeah, it looks like it's shown. Will everyone have?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we're back, and we're on to O-three Knights of Columbus. OA PUD number twenty-one zero-zero-five and PSP number twenty-one zero-one-two. Hi. Uh, please introduce yourselves.
Absolutely, good evening, Tom Corbett with Midwestern Consulting. I'm here with Jim Heisler from Norfolk Homes. I'm not able to raise my hand, do you see me there?
Yeah, let me catch you. I'm gonna use this. Um, you see it?
Oh, yeah, I clicked join us panelists twice.
Oh, I, I.
So I'm gonna put it again, join us panelists.
There you go. I want, I want.
Okay.
Obviously, you're accepting.
Feeling better about bringing the paper copies.
Yeah, I hope it's the fact that I see like.
Yeah, I just look at it again.
Smell though. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's really weird. Sorry, I didn't make any sense.
Yeah, sorry, Tom.
Zip pocket over there.
So I can do this. I have my notes here. I don't have a copy of the present. Well, I actually have a digital file, so. That'll work if you want to proceed. Perfect, thank you. So again, Tom Corbett with Midwestern Consulting here about the three nine eleven Dexter and Arbor Road preliminary Q B project. Um, again, with Jim Heisler for Norfolk Development. I'm going to go. Well, that's the first and second slide. The third slide is the site. Um, many of you will be aware of the site and the project to date. Uh, it's going to south side of Dexter and Arbor Road, adjacent to the north of I ninety-four. Between Wagner and Zed's Roads. It's less than a quarter mile from the city of Ann Arbor. Uh, the city of Ann Arbor's short distance to the east. Along Dexter and Arbor Road and I ninety-four. Um, scrolling to defining the project. Um, when we talked with the planning commission and, uh, since the inception of the project, we've got a number of different development goals to align with the master plan and the zoning ordinance, have a clustered all of these single-family residential neighborhood. Extensive open space. We're on approximately seventy percent of the site. We have both active and passive recreation. We have rest, we're proposing with the project restoration of the existing pavilion for social galleries. There's a pavilion that sits to the western side of the site. Um, that's been previously used for gatherings and it's proposed to restore that to use. Preservation of natural features that are on site, including woodlands, landmark trees and wetlands. And, um, to be served by potential public water and private community wastewater system. Next slide is proposed layout. Proposed layout for the project is forty-seven homes with private mode pathways throughout the site. Opportunity for reciprocal access for walking paths, opportunity for pathway along Dexter and Arbor Road. We are proposing private roadways with blocks on both sides of the street. Uh, we do have Washoe County Water Resources Commissioner's Office preliminary approval and the road commission is ready for detailed design, um, beyond the preliminary approval that we are here before you tonight for. Um, and with the study, it was determined that site does not warrant a lot of turn. Next slide, open space. This graphic, the area that's kind of shaded blue within the dashed blue line depicts the open space of the site. Again, this is a clustered neighborhood with seventy-one percent of the site is open space. We have preservation of over ninety percent of the priority three bio reserve area that's identified in the Silo Plan for Master Plan. We have approximately twenty-seven acres of preserved woodlands, including, uh, complex of open water and wetland, which is included in the drainage patterns of the site. Approximately twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one D V H inches or ninety-three percent of the estimated uh, site is protected woodland tree and tree preservation. Um, including those woodlands preserve, uh, are known to be preserved above. Next slide, utility stormwater management. Um, we are proposing a community wastewater treatment facility on the south side of the site. Um, tucked into, uh, some of the trees, uh, where we found appropriate soils for that system. It's adjacent to ninety-four. To the north of that is a active play area or recreation area. Um, our water options with the revisions. So one of the revisions we made to the plan, since it's been with the planning commission, is we're proposing three options, extension of a twelve-inch public water main from the Autumn Mall Drive, um, public water main under ninety-four through bore into the site, looping the site and then across the frontage of Dexter and Arbor Road. We also heard the concerns of the utilities director who indicated that a loop system will be more appropriate. So we also pro- propose an option to extend the and loop of the twelve-inch water main from Autumn Mall through the site up to Dexter and Arbor Road and then back down through to the Autumn Mall uh, property where the public water main exists. We then proposed with the current submission, a third option, which would be to serve the site with individual wells adding the tubes of the box. Stormwater management is being handled in a couple of detention basins that provide infiltration up towards the entry of the site along Dexter and Arbor Road. Next slide. Since our last meeting, just kind of highlighting some of the plan revisions that were made. Uh, Norfolk, uh, engaged with W S P and completed an eighty thousand dollar hydrological investigation. Um, in that investigation was submitted and reviewed by township consultants and it was determined that the anticipated wastewater discharges at the proposed Norfolk home site are not expected to materially influence off-site groundwater. But one of the things that came up at the planning commission was, um, a need for additional understanding with regard to what the wastewater solution might do at the site and impact the gellman plume. That study was undertaken and reviewed by Dr. Lemke. Uh, and he provided his findings in May thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Um, also since our meeting, we've met with the township consultants and stakeholders to share this information. We were also provided with response from the township, which included, uh, comments from O H M and the attorney. We did provide additional information with regard to the community wastewater uh, utility system, um, which talked or provided information about code conform, conformance and the anticipated flows for the site. We also received communication from the township attorney regarding archaeological concerns nearby site, which we, um, Norfolk engaged with, uh, Dr. O'Shea from the University of Michigan to research the information and provide a spot which we shared with the township. We again revised the submittal to include the three water options. In this recent meeting or ahead of this recent meetings, we did receive and see the information that's provided to the board in the packet. Again, Norfolk engaging with W S P to complete the hydrological study. Um, it was indicated at the meeting of the planning commissioners, but some other commissioners felt like having that information would be helpful in evaluating the project. Um, Norfolk obviously, um, had concern with agreeing to such an expensive endeavor without having some assurances on the project density, layout, all those kinds of things. Um, and the planning commission took action, but there were commissioners that, um, may benefit from having this information uh, and understanding. So with that, um, what I'll mention later in the report too, is that we respectfully request that the board uh, consider sending this project with the current information back to the planning commission for reconsideration. Um, we do respectfully disagree with the township planning commission meeting motion. That memo that was passed out with paper copy of the presentation, um, summarizes, uh, and indicates how we believe we are in conformance with the P U D. I'm not going to lose that full memo. A lot of that information's been provided previous in communication. It's also been provided on the plans. And, uh, I'll summarize in that the resident, the, the residential development we're proposing needs the P U D ordinance. We are consistent with the density and the density suggested in the master plan. We're clustering the residential lots to maximize open space on the site. The clustering of the homes within the existing open plateau or field at the site allows us to stay away from woods, trees and allows for the extensive preservation of natural features we're proposing. Again, seventy-one percent of the site is open space. Present, uh, preservation of ninety percent of the priority three bio reserve that's identified in the master plan. We have approximately twenty-seven acres of preserved woodlands, including the open water pond and the wetting, um, that exist at the site. We're preserving an approximate twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one, um, inches or ninety-three percent of the estimated protected landmark trees throughout the site. We're preserving many of the existing drainage patterns that exist, including the open water pond. We're providing, um, uh, it's likely that our development will also provide students to a school system that's declining in enrollment. We have, um, forty-seven homes that will work to address the housing, housing shortage on a par, on a parcel that's already surrounded by single-family homes. We have the potential extension of water main into this area, um, on the township. Uh, sorry, let me back up. Potential extension of water main into this area of the township on the developer's dime, including the four under the freeway. Um, this would also come with fire hydrants and quicker response times. Uh, in this area, there was a contribution proposed to the fire department. We are utilizing best practices for stormwater management, including infiltration. Um, we are proposing a wastewater treatment solution that has more controls than a typical on-lot, single-family drain field. The houses, um, as we had proposed to the planning commission, were, were going to be solar-ready and electric vehicle charging options to the homeowners. Was also indicated that there would be an all-electrified, um, housing option that would be available to homeowners should they choose. And, and we also plan to be a good neighbor with the project by providing all the buffers to the adjacent properties um, that are surrounding us. Again, all of that summarized maybe in a little bit more detail, but handout. Um, and in the plans, the socioeconomics of the project, we estimate this is about a twenty-one point two million dollar project. Three years to construct. The population will be about two point five five people per home. About a hundred and twenty people in, in total. The Ann Arbor school system, if you've read recent M Y of articles, they have declining enrollment. This would be adding school-aged children to that school system. Again, forty-seven homes to the housing crisis. And a projected annual tax revenue of over four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the township, county and Ann Arbor Public School. Uh, at about nine thousand, five hundred per house. Project benefits, you've heard me say this previous and I'll say it again, cluster development, less pavement, tree preservation, wetland preservation, open space, um, development, in development, recreation opportunities by restoring the zigo and the open spaces on the western side of the site. Walking and hiking paths, pedestrian walks, uh, concrete walks, play fields for both active and passive recreation. Well, uh, potential water main installation, fire service contribution. Um, proximity, we have good proximity to work centers being half a mile from Ann Arbor and just a short distance north of the Jackson Road corridor. We are along an existing transportation corridor. There's a bus stop um, shortly south of the intersection of Zeeb and Dexter and Arbor Home. I have Dexter and Ann Arbor Roads and we're providing more attainable housing um, in the township. So with that, again, our goal here tonight was to respectfully request from the board uh, that you consider to send this project back to the planning commission, given the information that we have today, and most importantly, that hydrogeologic study, um, which indicates that there, um, my words, but indicates that there isn't, there isn't expected any material influence on-site or groundwater flow based on the study that was conducted.
Well.
So the threshold question is whether we deliberate on this here and take action or uh, whether, I don't know, request, but who do you request to send it back to the P C? Is that? I mean.
That's.
Is that correct?
Let's see. Let's send it back to the P C.
All right.
I think we need some deliberation about direction. I mean, if that's.
Right, right. No, I'm, I'm just trying to frame the, what we're doing.
Yeah, so the, the model motion again is to direct staff to draft a resolution of approval or denial.
But that doesn't mean that you don't have the option to also, yeah, send it back. If that's what you want.
Yeah.
Whatever we want to do.
Yeah.
I, I guess I just share the recommendation right above that.
Okay.
The planning commission, utility director, township engineer and township planner recommend denial.
Yeah.
So we have seven people at the planning commission, eight, nine, ten different people that are involved in this and are recommending denial.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we should deliberate and discuss, so. In both.
I guess.
Sure.
I'm okay denying it. I was on the P C and I made the motion to deny.
I know you did.
But I have, have they done enough change? Have they changed enough things that they deserve a chance to represent to the planning commission?
Let's ask Laura for her opinion on that. Is I understood it, the site plan is essentially unchanged. But let, Laura, could you give us your opinions on that?
Yeah, so the, the site plan itself is unchanged. Um, as Tom indicated, they have supplied the, uh, full hydro geological study. Um, they've also provided the options for the water, um, connection and they've provided additional information regarding the, um, community wastewater system. Those are all very important things the planning commission was concerned about. Um, but in the report, if, in, in the background studies, um, you'll see that there are still issues with the three options they've presented for the water loop. Um, and I think Brandon and, um, someone from O H M, Sally or Matt are here. They could discuss that further with you. Um, and, and you know, the planning commission wasn't just concerned about the hydro geological study. They had concerns about the density. They had concerns about, um, that whether the project met the intent of the P U D ordinance. Um, so it wasn't all about the hydro geological study and, and I'm not, I'm not sure that the, um, you know, the site plan itself has not really, um, changed, um, to reflect wholesale changes to the, to the development.
Can I, can I ask the, the petitioner before? Good evening, gentlemen. Nice to see you again. Um, is municipal sewage a possibility? It, 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 not at all at all because you, you can't tie in from Ann Arbor out there. It seems so close. You said it's only a quarter mile from Ann Arbor.
We're outside of the Silo sanitary sewer service area.
I see that.
We are inside the Silo water service area.
Was that even explored or no? It's just off the table. You can't do it. We're not gonna be, make our map bigger. Ann Arbor won't put a pipe out there or.
I guess I don't want to put words in the townships or any of the people that were at the township that we spoke to at that time, other than to say that it was not feasible and they did not want to open up that negotiation with the city.
Mm-hmm.
On the amount of gallons per day they could put in. They had specific areas with that particular agreement.
Mm-hmm.
The water is a little different. Um, cause I'm not privileged of those agreements or I didn't close them, is they weren't concerned about the water. So that's why we do water nuts. Why we didn't pursue. You know, I think Tom summed it up. At that point, it was, there was other, uh, um, object, well, let's see, discussion points with, uh, that they were, the planning commission had more concerns. But at that point, we felt the major one, which was a very costly one, was doing that. Study of infiltration and the effect on the. Hydro geo study basically. Um and we decided to go ahead and do that and ask for a mandate back. Because basically, the um alternative is maybe some of the things you just talked about, the others. We'll we'll go back and rezone it to the master plan uh in accordance with what's. Um presented in master plan, that would be allowed and you wouldn't have all the protections of the open space and all of that. So you got R two on both sides of it, all pretty consistent along the road and a lot of areas. Which would allow, aren't close to same with how a lot of the protections we're putting in here.
But what you're saying is it's gonna be R two with sewer and septic or this, which is better for the environment?
That is what we will request.
That's your pitch?
That's, we're gonna request that, yes.
Okay.
We're not going away. We invested a lot of money in trying to make this work. And my knowledge, everything I just heard with the previous developer, we tried to address here. Is it perfect? No, did Thompson get everything they would like? Probably not. Do we have everything we would like? Probably not. But we're trying to do a better job than if we just say this is what's allowed by right and we're gonna do it. So right now, we're just asking for the opportunity to go back to the plan. Nothing gets approved at this point. We're just asking for that opportunity to go back.
Because it's a different planning commission or because you made all these great changes and they're just gonna salivate when they see it?
There, I guess, from my perspective, what I heard from the planning commission, there's some people that were supportive of the layout. How we've clustered and those kinds of things and the preservation that we have with the project. There are new commissioners for sure, uh than when we were there before. And we have, you know, one of the things that resonated for us was the comments from the planning commission, that they really wanted that hydro geo study. As you're aware, uh in attendance there. Um and with that information, I think that would be helpful in making a decision if I were.
Just for some clarity, the hydro geo study was originally done. Because you were proposing a community well.
No, that is incorrect.
Oh, really?
Yep, this is for the wastewater, we had, Eagle was out.
We also wanted it because maybe the wastewater treatment site could affect the Gelman plume. But originally, when the first hydro geo study was done. It was because of concern with the community well. And the community well drawing off so much water in the. Aquifer that it could potentially impact. The flow of the Gelman dioxin plume pull it further into that direction.
We we've talked about all those options.
Well, that's not an option, I'm just saying this was something, something going on.
We were proposing the public water main connection, so then the focus changed to, okay, let's not focus on the water we're drawing in. What about the water we're putting out?
Well, there was concern to, we've we've gone this far, let's just be sure. That the onsite sewer system is not going to dramatically impact the pull or the flow. Of the Gelman dioxin plume. However, it uh the whole, the original hydro geo study. Was done because of concern with the community well. And the large amount of water that would be pulled off with the community well.
That may have been a concern that was expressed that they wanted a hydro geo for. However, the hydro geo, we we switched after concepting away from a community well solution. Um there was discussion at planning commission, there was discussion at stakeholder meetings, we switched to the public water option. And I think that concern, as you indicate about the well, carried over to, okay, if we're not sucking water up. And we're taking water that we're pumping through pipes and depositing at the site, how does that affect it? So that's, that became the focus of the hydro geo. I mean, either way, we studied what the water effect would be for the site. The water coming out of the well, the water going in the um wastewater, it's still, it's the same amount of water, right? Um that that's happening, so.
I know that there was concern from Dr. Lemke about the community well. Oh, you remember that now?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. And he discussed it in great detail. Um and he did say he might not have the same concerns with. The wastewater affluent going into the ground. He did say that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Our, our response to that was when we resubmitted the last time through the planning commission, when it was taken action on, right? We had the public water, it's in the area that is in the service district for water. Though we were willing to pay to get it there. It's so we, legally, if we get it there, it's pretty much a service district.
But I think there was concern with our township engineer and our utilities director. That they, you you weren't proposing the kind of looped system. That they wanted for redundancy in the system.
Well, we took that out and one we're gonna propose now by saying we put, we looped that before and back across the expressway. We said we do that.
And I think the utilities director has concern about running such a line. Underneath I ninety-four or, I mean, M fourteen, what he, it's running it under an expressway. If there's a break, is potentially a huge amount of work. I think that was expressed.
Yeah, yes, that we we did talk about the water service master area plan. It does include two bores under I ninety-four. This development was going to bring one of the bores under, from the auto mall, under ninety-four. In a different location as opposed to being along Wagner Road. Where the highway is much wider, the right of ways much greater. We were moving the bore to auto mall to cross the freeway where the right of way in M dot's jurisdiction is much shallower. Um correct me if I'm wrong, I may be putting words in your mouth, but I think that was gonna be um in haste or.
Well, they.
Jack and bore, so we put the water main in, so if there was some water main problem, you would pull it out one way, fix it and put it back in, kind of thing. Pretty common practice. Again, the bores under the freeway are proposed in your water service master plan. We're proposing one in a bit better location from our opinion. From the freeway crossing because of the width of the freeway uh to the east.
And it hasn't been explored that, much other than a couple communications from the latest one. We're asking to have it manned back, talk about some of those things. We have no problem talking about it. We're just asking to have it manned back.
That's the board's decision as to how that goes, so.
Yeah, but I understand that, but I'm just saying, if you make your decision tonight. We're gonna apply for R two, and that's just something we're gonna have to do, and this goes out the window. We just sit here for an hour and a half and listen to all the things that the board said they wanted. I think, in our opinion, the board's entitled to theirs, a lot of them are here. We're asking for a chance to further discuss that, to mandate back to the planning commission to talk about it. So we're asking for it now.
Any other board member? Or can't be refused, though.
That's okay, I'll go online, or you you guys go ahead. Some other comments.
I I I guess I would say I do appreciate the density, I do appreciate, you know, the open space and and all the things to try and accomplish. Um I, I have some concerns, but then again, I'm not the expert in this, that's why we have experts. As far as the water bore, I will tell uh the rest of the board that there are other water bores of the rest of this township and. There's one under Baker Road, there's one, I believe, under Zee Road, I might be wrong.
Our utility director hasn't said those two.
Yeah, yeah. But I know, I know, I've seen, I've seen the utility director's letter uh to us about the plan and. I don't know, that that's something the utility director, the applicant could discuss to see if it's possible to use. Uh the Delhi alignment, I I don't know if that's something they'd be willing to agree to, but that's. That's something that the utility director seems to think would be a a better possibility and I. I don't know, it's an option, I, maybe it would work, maybe it wouldn't.
I I. I don't have any information about, something about Delhi. I don't see anything in there, is there?
There's a letter. Zero three K O C Utility Board. This letter. Yes. I don't know what page it is, and I go to the individual, I go to the individual item and look at the attachments.
Yeah, it's easier.
It was, I think. One suggestion from the utility director.
Yes.
Say that again, it's on page three forty-one.
It's Brandon's July twenty-third letter to the board.
Yeah, certainly I would want to hear what the engineer has to say on that as well.
So, um. Look, Clintoff, you just started a comment, it's. It was one suggestion from our utility director, but not his recommendation, right?
That's how I'm reading the letter, um he is recommending um denial. Um of the proposal, in his discussion on the bottom of page one, he describes it as. A more strategic approach would be to extend the water main north.
So the the strategic approach lies with the township, right? When, as we.
Correct.
Determine. Where we might want to expand then.
Right, and it follows a paragraph about what's in the township's best interest. So it's, it seems to be more what what the point of that um paragraph is.
Keeping in mind, um Brandon does not recommend approval. Of this proposal.
He recommends denial.
Correct.
As, as proposed, is right.
Correct.
But but they propose a one-way pipe and these guys are offering a two-way pipe. Right, a loop, right?
Well.
No, it's not the traditional loop, we could, if if Brandon is on.
He is.
And Matt Park should be on too.
Questions out first.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it might be more efficient.
I just want to note the August fourteenth memo by Laura Creps, the submittal changes. Um just a question, when she gets on. Regarding the community wastewater utility system. Um I have, you know, concerns about these, we we approved our first one. Um in a four to three vote. Um Heritage Woods. And I know this is different, but there's um paragraph two. Um Laura, you state that the applicant has provided written responses to the O H M review letters. Verified the adequacy of the applicant's response, O H M should provide follow-up comments. So I'd be curious to hear what O H M's follow-up comments are on the community wastewater utility system. I also want to um thank the applicant for addressing uh in particular. The the one item we've talked about on this is are the archaea- archaeological concerns, so thank you um for doing that due diligence. But um I have some questions and concerns about the wastewater um treatment facility that I hope O H M can respond to. Thank you.
Just the read, do you have anything?
Well, you know, I know we're talking about water and one of the options listed in this handout is still individual wells. And that is obviously of concern since we're so close to the uh Gelman plume. Um so I can't see how that, that's as as bad as a community, as a community well, it seems to me. Though um I think if you, it's either public water or 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 no development. I can't see putting all these forty-seven wells in the ground and sucking that water out and bringing Gelman closer.
That's why we propose the public.
I know, but it's still listed here as an as an option.
It is an option because if you do not want to put the well, you know, if you don't want to put the line under. Again, wells are an option and if we go by right, wells are approved by Washington County under their. Rule and regulations controlled by the state.
I know, uh the the other issue, and I bring up the same issue I had at the last one, there's no real community here. These are just homes, there's no uh community center, there's no act, you know, I mean, you have a playfield. You have two playfields, one of which is right next to the wastewater drain field, but we'll we'll leave that. Um and, you know, it's just, there's just homes. There's no community, no ability for them to interact.
I I kind of take offense to that because with this project, we do have a, we are proposing two areas for play. Two field areas, not full areas or anything like this, towards the end of the loop. And we're proposing one to the south side of the loop. And then on top of that, we have pathways to a gazebo that had been previously utilized for gathering. So we have sidewalks along our roads, we have pathways to the gazebo and the the playfields. So there is an opportunity to build community here if people want to, we've given them access. Both by, you know, concrete block and pathways. And then they have that that gathering space in the gazebo. What if, our intention is that people, you know, that live here will have the opportunity, I think somebody mentioned, you know, a Thanksgiving uh dinner. Obviously, you wouldn't have a Thanksgiving dinner in the gazebo unless it was a nice year maybe, but um you know, could you have a summer picnic with your extended family at the gazebo? We we hope that happens here, we've tried to make that an opportunity for this community.
So there's on-street parking?
There is on-street parking.
High enough for both sides?
I think we are, we can have it at least on one side for sure.
And we left open spaces by, or didn't have any houses by the open space, you could pull up by that if you had. Kids coming to drop off, other people in the neighborhood are playing pickup game, they, you would have a place not to be. Um right on top of uh existing homes. Vehicles.
And they're not on, you know, side slopes or hills or anything like that. I envisioned kids taking their, you know, spring-up net, kicking a soccer ball into it. Playing, I mean, to play a small game of baseball there, wiffle ball. Throw frisbees, you have all kinds of room to throw fris- frisbees.
I I do have to agree with you, Mr. Covert, that there is more opportunity for recreation here than. Than other projects, so I appreciate what you've offered for that.
And what are the size of the parcels? I know, it's it's been a long day, so I don't have you do the work.
So the parcels are, um generally speaking, uh the smallest would be sixty-five by one-twenty or about seventy-eight hundred square feet.
How does they?
They would have a yard.
How does that convert to acres?
Point one eight.
Point one?
Yep, point one eight.
So it's, I thought we had our ordinance is one acre for a well.
Actually, it is, if it's well and septic, it's it's one acre, but if it's just well and not septic.
The reason to pursue the P U D allows us to use a community treatment system and uh gain deviation for lot sizes. If I were fitting or had to fit a septic field and a well on these lots at seventy-eight hundred square feet, I wouldn't be able to do that. So um hence the community wastewater treatment su- system, we have. Hence the community wastewater treatment su- system, we have the space to put the wells at the lots.
So, uh, can I ask you a question, Laura? Perhaps, is she still there? Laura, this is our, this is a R C, correct?
It is currently zoned Recreation Conservation.
A- and, does it remain that in perpetuity, or they have to. Apply for a rezoning, let's say things go south and we vote no, and don't remand it to the planning commission, and then do they can. Either appeal that decision, or they can seek a new plan, and could they seek a rezoning to a, and what it is adjacent. Parcel, uh, a- and then. Is that something we'd likely be required to do, or can we say no, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a playground forever, or campground forever?
So the master plan calls out this area as L- Low Density Residential on the future land use map. Which is the same designation as the surrounding area. Um, I, I have in my report that A one and R one, single-family zoning districts are compatible, I don't have the master plan up. But I don't know that R two is compatible, but yes, if, if this were to, if this P U D um were not to pass for whatever reason. Um, a rezoning of property could come back um for consideration at the planning commission for a straight rezoning. A conditional rezoning could come, or a different P U D rezoning could come.
Yeah, and, and then, and if they're tired with the P U D process, and they went with R one. Uh, then how many R one homes and how many R one wells and septics would be on the parcel, that's something they may have already thought about as Plan B.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think R one is one acre, um, A one is two point five acres per parcel. Um, and so then, of course, there's well sighting distances and septic perk tests that have to occur, so. Um, and then roads, so it's, it's difficult for me to, on the, off the cuff, say how many.
I get it.
Could get there, um, but I think, you know, the, some of the same concerns are, are. Are relevant, eh, no matter what zoning we're talking about, right, there's, Gelman Plume is still. An issue and the drinking water um is, is a concern. Um, I guess if they do individual sites, if they can perk, um, then this would be on septic and the wastewater utility system potentially would go away, but. If they can't get the perks for every parcel, then they still might be talking about a wastewater uh treatment plant for this, for this development also, so. You know, no matter what it's zoned, I think some of the underlying issues that we're talking about today remain.
No, I appreciate that, but at the end of the day, if they're left with by right, then they have to build lots. Uh, on whatever pertable lots exist. And, and, and then the hell with us and our saying yes or no to a septic, they're, so I, I'm just trying to balance what they might be able to do by right in the future. Versus a P U D now that's before us, or. I don't know, I, I just try to think.
Could I ask Laura a question? Laura, so you, you know, I'm the, I'm the one that um is concerned about our open district, this is clearly. Um, recreational property, it's clearly in the Huron River Water Council Bio Reserve Area. Does that have any impact, because the way I interpret that, whether we have a map or not, is it could only be a P U D.
It could, well, the, yes, the, it, it, the text says that this is, and the ma- the map that potentially wasn't adopted, or was. Whatever happened with the map, right, um, this property was part of the open overlay, um, but P U D projects are exempt from that. And so, um, as this pro- as the project has moved forward, um, the, it was exempt from those open overlay regulations.
I'd have to look at that again, because I, um, I interpreted that the only thing allowed would be. A P U D specifically because of the natural features.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have to look at that, I'm not. A hundred percent.
Treasure Eagle, you hit your hand up, or were you just stretching? Let's see, Noel, do you have more?
I think it's very concerning that the consultants employed by the township. And our current utilities director. Recommend denial, I mean, and the planning commission, so. We don't often get. A summarized recommendation like this.
This strong recommendation.
Very strong recommendation, and I think we employ these outside experts. And we have a planning commission because supposedly they're developing expertise and reviewing site plans, and they have that expertise. We need to pay attention to what these people are saying and recommending. So I'm not going to go through everything I have down here, if we continue to talk much longer, maybe I will, but a most.
I, I need, I need, just to be fair to everyone, it gets to a point where we could talk about it for.
I know.
A very long period of time, if we, if someone wants to uh move it one direction or another, we can.
Want to call the question?
To, and just, I'm getting very close to, just to be fair.
Oh, it's for the deny, I'm sorry, Kathy.
I was almost going to call the question.
You don't have a question.
How embarrassing. Okay, I won't do that, I, I want to address, um. Jim, thank you, um. You made the point that um what we just discussed with the other property. That you're doing all those things, no, I actually, I, I, I think. We're in line with what we talked about for the other property, it's about protecting natural features. So I think this is in line with what we already, that we discussed the prior, I don't think it's contrary at all, in my opinion. Now, do you want a motion?
Well, I just wanted to say something, um, I. My biggest concerns with this, um. Well, the water system, um, and the wastewater treatment, which. There's a conundrum here, and also the traffic. And where the entrance, and I know this is, um, uh, where it showed. Yeah, so your parcel, the whole. Isn't along the, the Dexter and Arbor, there's only a, a small portion that is um able to. Connect with Dexter and Arbor Road. And it's right there in that curb, and there's, the traffic whizzes by, it's so dangerous, I have. When I campaigned, I went up and down every single, pretty much every single road in the township. And that, I had to go at night when there wasn't anybody around, so I could, you know, deliver whatever, because it is so dangerous. And there is, we had a resident that was killed, um, not last summer, two summers ago now, something like that.
I think it was last summer and it's very close to the.
Yeah, I think it's just, um.
Couple uh parcels.
To the east, I believe.
Thought it was to the west, but that's okay.
Yeah, um.
Close.
And there's a couple, and I noticed this the other day when I was driving by, there's a couple of houses that are for sale on that curb, and I thought, you know. If that was a possibility for you to buy those parcels and move the entrance, I would feel better, but that's just, you know, of course. It was just an idea, a thought that, that had crossed my mind, because the traffic does really concern me, and if we have um forty. What did you say, forty-seven homes, and then times two, I'm assuming everybody will have or at, at least two cars, that's a lot of um traffic. So those are my biggest concerns, I do like that there's a lot of open space, um, a lot of trees that are being saved, I like the fact that there's sidewalks and pathways. And that there are recreational areas, I do really like that, and I do like that the par- um parcel sizes are. They're, they're pretty, they're nice, they would at least have a yard, some of these, I'm thinking of Trailwoods where. These huge homes and they can look in each other's bathrooms, and that's how close they are, and there's really not a yard, and that's okay for people that want to live that way, but. I'm seeing that if this is um catered towards families, that children do need space. So that's, this is my opinion.
Okay, discussion.
One more question, what is the proposed sale price of these homes? In a year, when they're, when they're complete?
Or they'd probably be in the sixes to low sevens.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to direct staff to dra- draft a resolution of denial.
I support.
Motion by Brandt, support by Noel, to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial.
Their discussion. Are they asking for approval from us tonight? Or are we just denying it when they want us to remand it?
It's the board's decision as to the course that this takes tonight. The board would have to remand it, they don't remand it, the board would remand it to the planning commission. And we're saying no.
Is this on our agenda because of us, our planning, or because these folks want it on our agenda?
It was.
Yes.
Are you asking, John?
If I understand, are you trying to get at what would happen if we took no action?
No, I don't want to deny something, I, I'm not in favor of this project. And, and, and I'm okay denying it, but I don't want to deny it if they're not asking us to take action on it tonight. That's, I, my, mine is more of a question of process or procedure. If, if, if that, I, I may not be making myself clear, but are you, are you gentlemen looking for ultimately. A decision from the board, one way or the other, up or down? Okay, so you are looking. Up, down, or remand back? Okay, all right, man, that, that answers my question.
Okay, so just to be clear, if this is denied, then. The developers. Will possibly, I mean, the by right, they could just.
I think they'd have to, I, I think they'd have to seek, I think they'd have to seek a rezoning, because by right, they could put another campground. Maybe that's the only thing they could do by right, just, I don't know, that's a question maybe for Laura, what is entitled by right in an R C currently?
Yeah. Laura?
A K O A?
Sherman, her? I'd have to look up the, um, I believe it's a, the same lot size as agriculture, so one. Um, you could do a single-family home, one home for two point five acres. Uh, there's a couple other uses in Recreation Conservation, a park, a, um, uh, campground might be a conditional use. Um, but I, I'd have to.
Okay.
Verify that.
All right. But they couldn't, they couldn't just do more dense residential without seeking a rezoning than potentially, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion, and was there support?
Yep, motion by Brandt, support by Noel, to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial.
Denial is sending it back to the planning.
Denial would be denial.
It's another option that they were asking.
And, and could I ask, would that denial be based on the deliberations tonight, as well as the staff reports and the presentations? And the questions and the responses there too, is that what, uh?
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yeah, there needs to be, I, I don't make, uh, it's.
It would be, the, the current motion is to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial. So Laura and I would be working on the notes that we took during your discussion tonight. And presenting you with a resolution of denial based on what you had.
But can, but can we incorporate the staff, the, the reports?
You discussed that tonight.
Because they had specific comments in there, and those, thank you.
And the board would obviously consider that resolution the next.
Yes, it has to come back to you.
All right.
Revise it.
Thank you.
All the question?
Let's. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Motion by Brandt, support by Noel, to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial. Flintoff, yes, Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yapel?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero. Thank you both.
Okay, oh four. Possible action in consideration of the purchase of land or lease or of real property up to the time. An option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained. As permitted by M C L one fifteen point two six eight one D. That's a typo, uh, the board may go into closed session by a two-third majority vote.
And I would move that we do go into closed sessions to consider the purchase of land or lease of real property up to. The time and option to purchase or lease a real property that's permitted by the.
Support. Motion by Riser, support by Flintoff.
Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Flintoff, yes, Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yapel?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero. The board is now in closed session at ten forty-four. Christie, would you please um pause and mute, and the board can go and. I'd like to make a motion to return to open session.
Got that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? John, we're all here, good, okay.
Back in open session at ten fifty-seven. I would like to make a motion, if that's okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a conservation easement of application twenty twenty-three dash three. For an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars from Fund two thirty-three.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, maybe there was an aye, okay, sorry, it was, all right, um, motion passes seven zero, and then.
I'd like to make another motion to approve an appraisal for application twenty twenty-five oh two and an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars from Fund two thirty-three.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And. We have uh public comments. This is time for the members of public, public to speak to the board of trustees for up to five minutes on any matter, there, we have no one present, anyone online?
Uh, first off is Cam Boyd, followed by Rob Hatton, go ahead, Cam. Thank you, um, during the Piper, uh, Piper Ridge um discussion. Um, it, it came up of the, the purchase price that he is, would be asking for. And, um. I, I don't remember who it was that was talking about the comment of, of, it didn't seem to be affordable housing. So I, um, I had husband do a little bit of research, and in June of twenty twenty-five. Scioto Township median home price was between five hundred. was between five hundred and twenty thousand and five hundred and thirty three thousand. And so when a developer comes in and saying that they're starting base prices for thirty, for forty, that is under the medium. Yes, you can find homes that are less than that. They need, most of them are going to need work. So I know we get, we we get stuck in our ways, well, you know, we paid this much for our house thirty years ago. And you tend not to understand what the prices of homes are selling for. So I just want to give you that information. And if you want information like that in the future, let me know. I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township resident, continuing my opening comments. As Jeff Harshy made clear during the last D D A meeting, the only reason the D D A captured two million dollars a year is because it was in place for thirty eight years. The TIF capture is only the difference between the first year's taxes and this year's taxes, the delta. If you restart the D D A, it will take decades for that delta to build up again to bring in substantial TIF captures. The fact that all this was done with no plan on how the township was going to make up for the loss of two million in tax revenue every year is inexcusable. If the previous supervisor had done something similar, every single one of you would have ripped him up one side and down the other for his incompetence. That same criticism applies to the four members of this board who voted to dissolve the D D A. One last D D A issue, the week after you dissolved the D D A, you had a joint board, planning, and D D A meeting to discuss the Jackson Road overlay district, except the D D A no longer existed. J Rod was a huge effort and you excluded the very people in the D D A who were most focused on doing things to benefit that area. Very poor leadership and planning. Kathleen, after opening public comments, you had a response. You said, I made a mistake in claiming that Jess was responsible for adding two hundred pages to the agenda packet after it was posted. You said Christie was the designee. I wasn't willing to throw Christie under the bus and claim that she is the only one responsible for the agenda packet. I believe Christie is constantly fielding curveballs from this board. The truth is, everyone on this board is responsible for getting complete items to Christie in a timely manner. I have made my opinion clear that I believe Jess is the most powerful person in Township Hall and is in effect running the township. That means I believe that Jess has primary say about what happens with the agenda. You were referring to section four point oh of the Rules of Order. What you didn't do was refer to section four point one of the Rules of Order, which states, quote, timing for submission. Complete items for the next regular meeting must be received by four P M on Monday, the week before the pro- the next regular meeting. Timely submissions may appear on the next agenda as determined by the designee. Designee will have the sole discretion to determine if an item is complete. Submissions received after this deadline will not be placed on the reg- on the next regular meeting agenda unless the designee determines that inclusion is absolutely necessary, unquote. That's all of four point one. I will note that your interpretation of the Rules of Order tonight is exactly the opposite of your rigid interpretation of what constituted a rejection by the D D A. By failing to refer to section four point one, you show that you interpret the rules according to what is convenient. That's not good enough. Please, in the future, apply the same standards to all of your interpretations and actions. I look forward to a day in the near future where this board gets back on track, returns to its promises of being honest, open, and transparent, and we can finally get away from these exhausting interactions. And I can be as positive about this board again as I was in November twenty twenty four. Please work together to get that, to get
Thank you.
That future. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? No hands raised.
Support.
Okay, at, what time?
Eleven oh four.
Okay. Oh, all in favor, say aye.
We also don't need the time to.
Remuted.